Today is October the first, two thousand twenty-four, six parts of the Darlington City Council Agenda for the regular city council meeting. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. Just a quick reminder, we have a lot on the agenda tonight. We ask everybody to stay on topic of everything that we've got here. When you're coming up for public comments, remember that you've got five minutes. We ask that you do not direct any comment directly to any council member or city employee. Keep your comments to a five-minute limit and we can discuss that afterwards. We'll discuss that if your comments are for, just for that comments. Again, we ask council to stay on target. We've got a lot to cover tonight. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. If we can invite Mr. Face, Mark Face, if you have anything to say, one first.
Good evening. This is good, everybody. Ladies, gentlemen of council, Mr. Mayor, I have a little scripture to read. First John, chapter four, seven through eleven. I encourage everybody to read that. When I walked in, one of our citizens handed me this. This is for me, but I think it's pertinent to tonight. Be the reason why people believe in beautiful souls, kind hearts, and good energy. Never stop being a good person. Do not let unwholesome talk come out of your mouth. But only what is helpful for building others up according to their needs, then it may benefit those who listen. That's Ephesians four, twenty-nine. Before I pray, Mr. Mayor, I would like to take a minute just for everybody to take a thought in their mind for what's happening in our country here, very close to us. I'm sure everybody in here has friends or families in those areas. My brother lives on the border of Georgia and South Carolina, each field county is still out of power. Can't get out of their driveway. They live in the country. I told him he should have lived in the city. But we just take a moment. Gracious heavenly Father, please help our council to live at peace with everyone. When it is necessary, give them the boldness to stand up for what is right, honorable, and true. Help them to bring peace and restoration and reality in a world filled with so much conflict. Let us live a life that cultivates unity. Help our council to be loving and encouraging to others. Fill them with the Holy Spirit to guide and empower them. I believe you make all things new, and you desire a world marked by grace and mercy. So God impart the knowledge and wisdom to each one of these members as they begin tonight's business to protect our citizens of Darlington, our city council, all our first responders and their family members. And Father, I just ask this in your wonderful Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen? Amen? Amen?
Everybody stand with a flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for approval of the minutes. I'm asking the minutes for the regular city council meeting. If they'd be redone or more detailed or just paraphrased more so than there, I would like to see. There's a lot of stuff missing on those. And I've worked it out.
Anyone?
A good number of places I haven't pointed out. Please, one more detail, a little less than one detail.
So we'll just move on September tenth. All right, I'd like the motion to approve the separate September tenth, two thousand twenty-four executive session minutes.
Before we do that, there is a correction on the September tenth. The meeting time, that the executive session started, it contributes the time of the meeting. The meeting is reflected at six P. M. that it started, but it says executive session started at five or six.
I'd like to amend my motion to include aforementioned.
And I'll second.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Backus, Mr. Reed, Mr. Steger. I thank you. Motion to approve the minutes for September twenty-fifth, executive session.
I make the motion that we approve the executive session meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Mr. Douglas? Mr. Reed, I'm Mr. McCray. Mr. Backus, Mr. Steger, Mr. Steger. I'd like to make the motion before we go forward to amend the agenda for tonight. We have a lot of people here for the proclamation and want to put at the bottom end to amend putting L. and M. under review business and the top review business.
L. and M., okay.
L. and M., move it to A. and B. and finally make it.
I'll second that.
Can Mr. Reed, you made a motion? Mr. Reed, you made a motion?
Yes.
Mr. McCray, Mr. Backus, Mr. Steger, I, Mr. Steger, thank you. Our citizens wishing to speak, you have five minutes. You'll come up. Let's see, Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Douglas. Good evening. I have a question. My question is, what is the process that the city follows before demoing property and homeowners property? And I just need the process kind of laid out because I can't find it on the website. And I'm curious to know what that process is.
So that we don't make any mistakes, do you mind Sheila is the lady, do you weigh Sheila? Would you meet with her? She can get your contact information and she can then outline everything that is involved in that process. She's our building inspector.
All right, now, where can I find it in writing on the website?
So I don't know if we have it in writing on the website, but I'm sure we can get it put on the website. It's a good idea.
Is it in writing anywhere?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sheila, could you respond to that?
Forward. We're going to do this law right now, but you can get my third.
I'll get the word.
And question, are the letters supposed to be sent certified?
Yes, she'll explain all that.
Should be sent certified, supposed to be sent certified.
The original letter.
If we find that it is not, then whom do I sue with?
The original letter gets sent. Notice condemnation gets sent certified. Subsequent correspondence does not have to be certificated.
So how do you ensure that the homeowner receives those letters? Does it become the word of the homeowner against the word of the office?
No, ma'am, it would be through the certified letter.
But she's saying that the next letters do not have to be certified.
So we follow state law. So in that, I'm just speaking, don't hold me to these words. But that's why I suggested that you speak to the expert on the subject. But as she just stated, we have to send the certified letter originally. And then after that moment, I'm assuming now that the rest of the letters, we can just send by correspondence. But you're asking us questions that we don't actually have the information to. That's why I suggest if you would meet with her and my number is on the city website and call me, I could pack it if you don't have a resolution that you like.
Well, my, I guess the reason why I'm bringing this up is because this is something that everyone needs to know. Instead of having that one-on-one conversation, this is something that should be open to the public because it's the public's property that is being demoed.
I'm sorry.
And so my next question is, what is the deadline? Like, okay, a letter comes, you contact the city. Then after that, what is the deadline? Again, where is this in writing?
So you're saying your property was?
Yes, my property was demoed. Property that I own was demoed last Friday. We originally, the certified letter that was originally sent when we purchased the property through auction was two thousand twenty-two. I signed for that letter, January two thousand twenty-three is when I spoke with someone in that office. I have not received any letter since then. How I found out my property was being demoed was because I got a phone call at eight o'clock Friday morning because we had a for sale sign in the yard that I recently put out there about two, three weeks ago, which I have pictures to prove that. A gentleman called asking, how much did we want to sell the property for? The morning that it was being demoed, which I thought was interesting. So then I told, you know, I told him my price and he said, huh? For just the property? And I said, what do you mean? There's a house on there that can be renovated. And then he said, no, ma'am, they're tearing your house down. And I said, say what? So then I called my sister, who was in Darlington at the time. She beat me to the property. She spoke to the gentleman that was on the escalator at the time. He got off the escalator, she came up here, she spoke to whomever in the office about it. And that's when the lady was saying that the letters came out just at third. So I was on speakerphone on my way up here and I kept saying, we never received those letters. The certified, yes. I spoke to her after the certified. It was told, oh, yeah, okay, because I called about it and said, we got people looking at it. They're trying to decide what we're going to do with it. So then by that time, by the time I made it up here, my sister was there. She gave us copies of the letters that were mailed that I never received. So then I went back to the property. By that time, the gentleman was on the telephone, he was off to the equipment. You know, I had a conversation with him. He was telling me they needed a job, he wanted to bid, so that's why he's tearing it down. So then I said, okay, well, I'm going to the council because I want to know why, you know, again. And my thing is, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not going to dispute that it needed to be torn down, it didn't. But my point is, you took that away from me when you just tore it down and I was not forewarned that it was going to be torn down. So now you're going to try to charge me six thousand dollars to pay the gentleman who tore it down? When if it was going to that where it needed to be torn down, everybody said, okay, tear it down, tear it down. Unless they, I got the letters, my husband should have tore it down for me for free. That's my whole point. What address is this? Two, zero, four Lee Street.
Can Mrs. Douglas look at it and give me?
Yeah.
Yeah, my sister and I, we.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And get everybody's reminded that the council and we don't want to talk back to you, but we don't have information. Talk back and forth and know what the issue is, so we're taking everything as comments. So that's why we ask that you just direct stuff to us as comments and it will get to you or be directed to the correct person. Steve Hoffman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I don't live in the city, I live in the county. But Friendship Street is our only access to our property because we own almost all of thirty-nine plus acres that border Friendship Street. I do have packets here if you'd like to look at them, Mr. Mayor, what I'm going to be talking about. I don't know who to give it to or pass it. And for, I believe District Three borders us because Friendship Street, I call it the forgotten street of Darlington City. I believe it borders District Three, whoever the council person is for that, if they want to copy the pictures. But I'll go through it. Back the very first three pictures in there, back on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, some hotel that was refurbishing went down to the end of Friendship Street, which is in the woods. And the street officially ends behind Bowen Apartment, or Bowen Manor Apartments. Friendship Street goes from the curve where D. Street ends, goes back to the Darlington Cemetery. And then Friendship, Friendship Street begins and it goes down into the woods. I guess Darlington City used to have an old dump down there where they used to take their road destruction supplies and dump them. Somebody must have realized that's still down there. They took all these mattresses and furniture from some hotel that was being refurbished and dumped them there. To make the story short, Darlington County came out, the city came out representative. The city representative said he'd get it cleaned up, he just had to go get the right equipment. That was back in April. Here we are, beginning of October, it's all down there yet, as you see through picture one, two, and three. That was just taken the other day. With the recent storms we have, the curtains and everything are coming over on our property and into Coker's Woods that borders the street on the other side. That's one of the issues of Friendship Street. The other issue is, we can't get anybody down there to service anything on that street. When we call city, the city says it doesn't belong to the city, you got to call the county. Call the county, the county says it belongs to the city. I've looked at the map, Friendship lies in the city. It goes about two feet in or five feet in on our property and we are the county. So if you look at page four, there's a fire hazard there that was broke off seven years ago that is leaking water. It's been leaking water for seven years according to all the people that live by it. So if you start looking at page five and page six and seven, that is resulting in the water. They used to fill up the ditch, but when Georgia Pacific did their construction back there, they filled in the ditch and never dug it back out. So now it fills in, as you can see on page five and six, it fills in the curve there off of D. Street and on Friendship Road, which we tried to get that taken care of. But Georgia Pacific just shrugged their shoulders when we talked to the manager. If you go to page towards the very last page, or if you look at all those pages from five, six, and seven, we have a problem with puddles. Nobody wants to fill the puddles. I mean, it reminds me of when I was a young kid working up in Wisconsin on a farm, driving the tractor down the fields. When I take my car down there. I mean, when you hear the school buses go by, they're just getting beat to death. Three school buses go by there twice a day. So I mentioned something else. If you go to one of the last two pages on there, one says, dumps September twenty-first, picked up October first. I have it circled there. That is two mattresses, a large refrigerator, and a footstool was dumped off on September twenty-first. I tried everybody to come pick that up. Finally, today, the prison camp came up, picked it up. When everyone down the road. But that happens continuously. People come out and dump their home appliances, their living room furniture, everything that they can think of. And it's not just, they get out and dump it. I'm watching, they come down the road, it's a pickup truck, they just push and go. I mean, and it's in the middle of the road. These are off to the side because I took my tractor out there and pushed them off. So I asked a certain person in the city last week, what can we do about putting a light on that post where? And this, they always dump in the same spot because they know I can't see from my property and the guy down in the corner can't see them. And the very last page, I put a light, why can't we put a streetlight on that pole? A certain city department told me, if I want a streetlight, call my utility company and pull one up and I'll be you have to be responsible for the cost. And I told them, it's a city problem. It's not my problem. It's being dumped on your street, but most of the time, we can't get down the street unless I get out there and move stuff off to the side.
So you're on Friendship, when I'm coming down off of D.
Yes, ma'am.
And crossover Friendship, are you on the left-hand side at the end or are you?
I am right in the middle. If you come down D. Street and turn to your right on that little curb, which is all mighty full puddles, and turn to your right, there's a part of woods which I understand is cokers. But then when you start coming to the clearing, my son lives way in the back behind the pine trees. His mother-in-law lives behind the pine trees. I just moved down here two years ago. He's been having these problems for seven years. The new house out front, manufactured home out front with the little pine trees and stuff, that's me. We are on the left as you're going down away from the Darlington Cemetery and down towards Bowen Manor Apartments. Because those are the only two access roads in and out. But the city street is my only access to my property.
Mr. Hoffman, we will be on it first thing in the morning.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Hi, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Polly, how, how?
Um, I'm not going to take five minutes for sure, but I just want to thank council, the mayor, and everyone, the city, the workers, the water department. I've lived in Darlington all my life and I love Darlington. And I'm seeing progress. And I, that gives me comfort and joy because that is something that all of the work that's on East Broad Street, I hate. I absolutely hate it. But I know it's got to be done. And we're finally addressing some of this stuff that's been out there for so long. And I admire you, Mayor, for taking the bull by the horns and making sure this is done. Mr. Schubert with the water department, the funds that he has brought in to be able to enable us to do this kind of stuff, I just appreciate it. I just want to say something positive in this.
Thank you. Julia Langley and Krista Abbott.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're delighted to be here and we have some fantastic news. Last year, we had seventy vendors at our Sweet and Tasty Festival. This year, the forty-first annual Sweet and Tasty Festival, we have one hundred and thirty-eight vendors signed up, taking up one hundred and seventy-seven seats. I have met with the police department on two different occasions. I just cannot say enough kind of words about them, about them meeting with us and kind of orchestrating us so that traffic will flow in and out. They are just wonderful. Every day, well, let's say our deadline was August fifteenth. We started getting applications in April and May. By June, we have about forty applications. And so it's been very exciting, but now people are still calling and we are full. We put on Facebook that we're full, we cannot take anymore. We cannot process anymore and get them on a map and get the police to approve it and it's just not enough time. But we are very excited to have that many people coming to Darlington. We've gotten a lot of sponsors. We have, I know that when Bill Taylor was mayor, that I came up and I knew that since the tax accommodation was not available for us, that I said, well, we need you to be a sponsor back like in the old days. And so I was packing, I don't know where we stand on getting any help here. So that's, we all answer it later and let us know where that is. Also, I want to let you know that when John Payne was mayor last year and we were getting ready for the festival. City minister, excuse me, we have, sorry. We have, you know, vendors all around the square and we know where electricity is, we have it marked. We know where the poles are, we know where the plug-ins are. And so Krista and I went around and checked that all again around the square. We assigned the vendors to those places. Then I developed a separate map for Chuck Kelly, our electrician whom we pay to go around because John Payne had said that we have to pay somebody to go check and make sure they're all working. So the pilot pays that. And then John Payne had said, if anything needs repairing, let them know and they would handle that. So I've spoken with Gloria about that today. But Chuck Kelly could not complete his check today on all the unless I just ask him to check where we need electricity, where I highlighted on the map for him to see. And he's already found two, one by Mexican Grill and one over in front of the old D.C. North Department. Those two are not working. And so you see, what we're having to do is go then and go back and reassign where vendors go so they can get electricity. It's just an issue. But Chuck Kelly promised me that he would have to mark that in and so I will get that. I know I'm not supposed to mention names, I'm so sorry. But anyway, I will get that information out so you know which ones are not working. And we'll switch around as best we can with what is working available, we'll move vendors around. We have vendors asking where, when am I going to get this? We told them, you get it at least one week before. And so with going down Main Street, with going down Pearl Street and more around Square, we're developing different letters to go to each one. You come in this street, you sit up here, the pilot will direct you and you go out here and you can park here. So we're trying to give them as much information as we can to, so that we won't have congestion around the square. And everybody will be happy and everybody have a good time. On a good note, I will tell you, I got a call about a month ago from a lady in Lawrence, South Carolina. And she said she had a church group of thirty ladies, she was going to load up anything and come to the festival. So we're excited to promote Darlington and we hope that you will consider supporting us and helping us with these little issues that we're having. We're very excited. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, Adrian.
I'd like to ask all y'all to hold comments until I'm done with this statement. I recently went through like an event with my city trying to beg for resources and it turned into more. And also involved you, you know, all of them. So I'd like to say this, I feel wrong by my city.
Again, I ask that you not point out anyone.
Well, I said, I'll let you to hold.
Okay, but you.
But you're up. But I said, I feel that I was wrong by my city and I want an outside investigation. Also, I want to comment on Backus' comments from last week.
Mr. Adrian, I'm going to ask you another couple names.
We can't name drop?
Yes, sir.
I feel like my city basically legally interrogated me over trash bags. I feel like this woman right here.
Adrian, go ahead and sit down, sir. I'll ask you twice, have a seat, sir.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we can't have comments where you personally attacked somebody.
It's not personal attacks, but it's true.
Yes, sir, go have a seat.
Doctor just attacked me a lot.
Would you ask?
Politician dog.
I apologize for that, but we earned him a light left in here tonight, or he is.
Thank you.
I think this is, it looks like Doctor B. can't breathe today.
Is that Don Blanket?
Don Blanket.
Yes, sir. How y'all doing? I'm just here to, I love to remind you, I came six months ago and I was asked, I asked the council about McCoke Street and Magnolia Street where the tree roots are coming up out the ground where two cars cannot come down the same side of the road. I'm just coming to reaffirm you that I have seen nothing on that case. Just wanted to throw it out there to you, just the case, if you want to go take a look at it, whatever, if they have it.
McCoke Tree in.
McCoke and Magnolia, where the trees coming out, the roots come out the ground, there's two cars that come down, I brought it up six months ago. Also, I want to bring another thing, another topic. From Lee Street to Limit Street on both sides of A., B., C., and D. on that side. They are roads that are partially paved, they are roads that are partially paved and got rocks on it with dirt. Something, I just want to throw that out there to you that that's not safe. I'm asking to take a look at that, something to be done about it, if something can be done, even if it's in the budget, that way we can turn around and do something else besides throwing rock and dirt and actually, don't pave but partial. Pay the, I mean, just actually just do the John Lee's be done for the streets. And I'm just saying from Lee Street, where it was down from months ago, that it's partially rocks, dirt, but it's other streets that have been paved all the way through. It's just something that you just take a note of and take a look at. I'm just wanting to bring that to your attention. That's very, that's very important to the city and people of Darlington. Don Blanket.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Ms. Pritchett, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. First, I want to thank you, Councilwoman Gardner, for at least answering the young lady's question. That meant a lot, I know to me. Because like many other residents, we come before council and we made a number of comments. And personally, I feel like oftentimes they're left on deaf ears. Over a year ago, Councilwoman Backus, other council members, myself, other residents, have asked that the Public Works Director provide us with monthly revenue and expenses so that the citizen would have visibility for how much our work and support is costing. I noticed on the agenda this evening, there's a discussion about raising our rate again. I don't think that's too much to ask. So if you guys would please consider.
So if you guys would please consider having the director as part of his monthly report to the citizens. After all, it is our money. And after all, there's new discussion about raising our water bill again. And I can tell you, I've had discussions with one resident who was so perplexed. She didn't know if she should pay her utility, she should pay her electric bill or her water bill for fear of getting her water cut off. The demographics of the city of Darlington, collectively, we're low to moderate incomes. So as you consider your work sections, perhaps you can do a deeper dive into how much money this city really has and making wise decisions on how our money is spent. Because it seems as though when funds run short, the first go-to is to increase our water and sewer rates. And on behalf of all of the citizens, especially ones that are low to moderate incomes, I ask that you share some empathy, use sound judgment in terms of how you're spending our money, please. I also noticed on the agenda for purchase of some property. I would hope that we don't purchase any more property until we at least sell the property that we already purchased for over six hundred thousand dollars. That's just it. Not sure if that was the wisest decision, but you guys represent us. You are spending our money. Please help us. We cannot go through another rate increase on our water and sewer. Also, we are told that there's low funds within the water and sewer budget. Yet, the previous city manager gave the Director of Public Works a fifty thousand dollar increase that most of you guys knew nothing about when his limit was clearly five thousand dollars. So I ask again that you guys look into that. I don't know where our lawyer is. He often, he used to attend. But if the lawyer can't touch base with Slade, perhaps I'll solicit his office, office standing. Because we cannot just have people giving our money away. We have to question the legality of that as well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Watts.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to talk today. I am just here as a concerned and yet really hopeful citizen. The city of Darlington is at a beautiful precipice right now where we're starting to get growth again. We're starting to see positive change. And I want to continue to see these positive changes. Like we've got, businesses growing, families are moving back to Darlington and we're bringing young family and young money back to Darlington, which is a positive thing. My biggest concern about Darlington, though, is there's the saying in Darlington, it's better to ask for forgiveness than it is to ask for permission. Whenever it comes to remodeling homes, if it comes to upgrading buildings, if it comes to purchasing properties, it's, it becomes a hassle to be able to change the windows in your own home or to be able to purchase a historic building downtown and get it upgraded. So, but that is you guys' job. And luckily, we're here so that we can make like these years so people can upgrade properties, that they can upgrade their personal homes, their businesses. Also, I have noticed a lot since being back that Darlington has very much an I mentality versus a we mentality. It's time to change that, right? It, it's 2024, let's move forward. If Darlington was not built by individuals, right? It was built by the community through movements, through changes, through discussions, through citizens taking to the streets even. Darlington has made it through it all, but none of it has been done by an individual. It had to be done by every single one of us working together, no matter what. And now's the time. It is the time. And I just wanted to, I'm definitely not going to take all five minutes, but I just wanted to sit here and say that I have hope and I have faith that we can go for, we can make these changes. But I'm asking that we work together to do it. Every single solitary one of us needs to work together to make changes. Are we all going to get along? Absolutely not. But it's important. If we want things to keep moving forward, we have got to work together. And I'm happy to see it starting. All right, that's it. Thank you, guys. Continue the amazing work and yeah, we'll see you later.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Under new business, we've promoted for the eightieth anniversary of Mr. Mitt, Consis regulatory Number 197.
Mr. Mitt. When I came in, I didn't have a time to, uh.
It was already happened.
Could I, could I speak, Mr. Mitt?
You can, over the next time. We're already, we're already there.
Mr. Mitt. No, Mr. Kurt, you go.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I was investigating an issue that I want to bring to the council. And then you, Mr. Mitt.
I told you, you have to wait, okay?
No, no, Mr. Mitt. Could I speak for two minutes, Mr. Mitt?
I'll be available at the workshop in the house.
I got an issue.
You go ahead and ask him. I'm asking you to sit in.
Can I sit and talk?
You can sit, but you can't talk. Okay? All right, we will conduct a business, all right? Okay. You want to come up? Is she by herself?
Yes.
Whereas the PD Consis regulatory Number 197, Ancient and Accepted Scottish Rite of Freemasonry under the authority of the United States Supreme Counsel of the Sovereign Inspector General of the Thirty-third at the last degree of the Prince Hall affiliation is celebrating their eightieth anniversary. And whereas the PD Consis regulatory Number 197 has held fast this mission statement to improve its members and enhance the communities in which they live by teaching and immolating the principles of brotherly love, tolerance, charity, and truth while actively embracing high social, moral, and spiritual values, including friendship, compassion, and dedication to God, family, and country. And whereas their contributions throughout the community from donations, sponsorship, and scholarship have aided area young citizens advance their academic education through universities and leadership programs since the Consis regulatory was established in 1944. And whereas the Scottish Rite of Freemasonry, PD Consis regulatory Number 197, has made an undeniable mark on the city of Darlington by living out their creed. Human progress is our cause. Liberty of thought, our supreme wish. Freedom of conscience, our mission. And guarantee of equal rights to all people, anywhere, an ultimate goal. Now, the mayor and council on behalf of its citizen does hereby proclaim the twenty-sixth day of October in the year 2024, Scottish Rite Freemasonry, PD Consis regulatory Number 197, Day.
Good thinking. Thank you. All right, the South Side, Darlington County African American Museum. Any here?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to present the new Darlington County African American Museum, which will be established in Darlington, 131 through 133 Pearl Street. I am happy to present to you that we have received funding. And when I say we, the Darlington County African American Museum is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization established to restore 131 through 133 Pearl Street for an African American museum in Darlington. We've received funding from the state of South Carolina. I have sent out to you a packet that gives the names of the board of directors. It gives pictures of the current conditions of the building, the proposed exterior, what it's going to look like, and a schedule of the activities for the demolition and restoration. On October fifteenth, October fifteenth, at eleven o'clock a.m., we'll have a press conference to announce the restoration as well as followed by a reception, which will be at, I think, the Old Marketplace, 103, I think it is Pearl Street.
Is it October fifteenth?
October fifteenth, eleven a.m. You're all invited to attend. I didn't put my contact information in the presentation, but please be sure, be, know that you can contact me at eight four three, three three two, three five eight nine. I will entertain any questions from council.
Appreciate a hearts-filled lady coming to Darlington to help beautify our town and the wonderful work y'all are doing for this. This is wonderful.
And to Robert Williams, that's the only reason I'm.
I'm sure you appreciate you.
Robert Williams has been friend and confident and, and has been a constant supporter of projects that I've worked on. So I'm happy to help out with this. Of course, we need everybody's support. And as we progress on the project, because it's not, it's, please understand, this is not something that's going to happen next week or next month. The demolition, as you see the schedule, but we have to get funding. So we are hoping that by June nineteenth, 2025, we can open the door to the first three thousand square feet that will be restored. We think this will be enhancement for the city of Darlington and, and it will do lots to restore that property. And we are looking at additional properties if we can get funding. And we're also looking at preserving the history of African Americans for not just the city of Darlington, for the county of Darlington.
Where will the press conference be held on the fifteenth of October?
We will have the press conference at the site and then we will move down the street to 103 for a reception. And you're all invited. Any other questions?
Well, Janie, I just have a comment. I want to, I want all of our citizens to know the long-time work that you have been doing in trying to preserve and bring forth African American heritage. You have been working for a number of, number of years.
Sorry.
We have had, we have worked on many projects. And I simply want to thank you as I have encouraged y'all to say, find something in Darlington. And lo and behold, the Lord has led you to do something in Darlington. Such a compliment to you. So I want to thank you too.
Well, I should say, when you see Representative Robert Williams, because it's mainly through his work in the General Assembly that we've been able to get this funding. So when he contacted me two years ago, I'm like, Robert, I don't have time. But, you know, he was able to get the funding and we are able to do some work. I also ask that you support us because we will be coming around to gather artifacts, to gather stories from Darlington. So I ask your support in all of that. Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A Christmas lights downtown in the Mary Sue Wells Park. If you're not familiar with where that is, that is a Wales park across from Nick's BBQ that we've been working on for a number of years. Get tidied up and make it looking good. I've done some, few lights down there over the years. We met with Mr. Grayman and I've been trying to do something for Christmas also and provide. And we tried to see if we could figure out what can we do down there? We come across this company that is a sole company that will come in and actually, they will put lights on before you didn't pay one. They'll come in with no additional charge and direct us on where to put the lights. They've, as council had here, they've given us a kind of layout of some of the lights that we put on there and lights we moved in that area. It's a couple of different plans that we could do. We could start small, we could start big. We can decide to do, we would like to try to light that up. We've got power down there. We need additional power spread out throughout the park. We've got a price on that also. And then we're going to try to see if we can do one of these projects here for lighting up that area for the children for Christmas and have Santa down there and lay out some sleighs. And if it's over there, we can come through next.
I think it's great. I'm looking at these, at the pricing, which is, you know, when we first met, I said, you know, we have to consider our budget, what we can afford to do. It looks gorgeous, but we know we don't have infinite funds. So we do have to be mindful of that. And, you know, maybe it's something we do in phases. You do something small within our budget. And next year, we take the next twelve months. We actually need to go out and get some sponsors, ask our local businesses and corporations for their participation so they can sponsor and provide some funding so that we can make this happen. I don't think we have, unfortunately, the money to do that this year. All of that we would like to do, but it doesn't mean that it can't happen. It just will not happen right now at this moment. We have so many pressing issues that I, I don't see how, we really cannot afford all of this at this point. But it doesn't mean that this time next year, we won't be able to do that with sponsorship. We have great businesses and corporations here from everyone from Georgia Pacific to Bristol Oil, the racetrack. We can ask them to be partnered, to partner with us and to help offset some of those costs because basically when we're doing these things, just like any event, I mean, I brought Hunter in initially because we said we would need him to coordinate and part of his budget. But anytime you're doing things of this nature, I did event planning for fifteen years. You have sponsors and you had, and those things help to offset the cost. Because unfortunately, we as a city just don't have infinite funds and are not able to afford these beautiful things on our own. But if we get the right sponsors, we can do all of this and so on. I think we'll have to do a scaled-back version this year, a very scaled-back version this year. I think we'll have to do a scale back version this year, a very scaled back version this year. But we can do something that's nice and then next year, we can just totally blow things out of the water. And we will not just bring citizens from Darlington, but we can, at, at Hartsfield and Society Hill, but we'll be attracting people from Florence and maybe even Greenville will come down and look at our lights. But we need to budget accordingly because if we waited sort of to the last minute and when you, the longer you wait, the more expensive things become. And it, it, it's a rush. It's kind of like your air goes out on the weekend and you call the electrician and they charge you an extra hundred and fifty dollars just because it's the weekend. But if we plan properly, it is doable.
So, okay, the, the, what do you call this?
No.
Proposal, the proposals that we're looking at. I would, I want that, yeah. I, I see it, but does it mean fun? And the, and the designs that I'm seeing?
What? To the product of what?
Yeah, what proposal goes with what design? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, trying to figure out here. Because maybe we could, listen, okay, first I probably need to make this statement. I do think there's something we need to do. I just, I do think we need to, to do something that's part of, to spruce up the city for doing a Christmas. I, I just really do. Under, when I first came in that first year, we, we used old lighting and we went all the way down Main Street. That was something different, but we used what we had. We, we used what we had and, 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 and it was, I mean, still talked about. So I'm in, I'm, I'm into us doing something. Like Mr. McRaven says, we are in a crunch. So can we figure out what would, what is feasible and do what would be the most attractive?
Sure, so, um, in reaching out, Hunter put around and found us a commercial company that can do this type project. Reached out to them and they actually came and met with us, Mr. McRaven, he had COVID, but they.
Not me, that wasn't at that meeting, but you all, someone met with him?
Yes, ma'am, I'm saying that's what we had COVID.
Oh, okay.
And so they, what they did is they gave us two different bids. The original was sixteen thousand, other one was like forty-three thousand or something. That's way outside of our budget. You're, like you were talking about, we went and re-did our old lights. Cause everybody loved the, the angels and the stuff, the trees and stuff that we had done through the community. So we rose up again and made that happen. Then for the next four years, we invested forty thousand dollars a year, total a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the previous membership, or the previous mayor. We have two projects right here potentially that we may move forward. But one of them is for sixteen thousand, one was for twenty-five thousand. I would suggest, and go back to your question, what we do here and the difference between these two bids is how much we light it up. For instance, on this tree right here, you have every bit of every limb lit up. If we were to go to the twenty-five thousand dollar, that means we can do that and go further up. If we go with the sixteen thousand dollars, that means we're just gonna go up to like eight feet, ten feet kind of thing. With the project, I think it will bring people from out, from outside of our community if we were to move forward this. Mr. McRaven, you had mentioned bringing some different courses from our different church and having them. I think we can do some incredible events around this if we were to vote this through this year. The gentleman who is over the day and times, who has met with us and talked with us, has agreed that he's gonna come down and devote some time to us so that he can help us put this out. He also mentioned that if we use less lights or we need more lights, then he will be happy to help us as far as adjusting the budget once we get out there and actually are doing the project. What I would suggest is if you're worried about the budgetary concerns, and I have the accounting balances that we can discuss, but we have the funds to do it. I would suggest maybe we go with the sixteen thousand dollar project. And I probably can go out into the community and I'm sure I can recruit some other members on council who will help me raise the funds to bridge the gap between sixteen and twenty-five thousand. I think that'd be no problem. But I think this would be a beautiful asset to the community, be a way to bring us as a community as a whole together. Give us a positive outlet for our children to be able to experience a little Christmas joy and especially those who may not can afford to get out. My family's been very fortunate to be able to go to a night of a thousand candles in Brook Green, Brook Green Gardens at the beach. It is a magical, magical place. And I'd just like to bring a little taste of that to Darlington.
So my thought before we spend money on Christmas lights. Gloria. Where, where we at as far as the hospitality tax? And what we have to pay out of the hospitality tax now?
Right now, the hospital tax, we know we got two bonds that we're gonna have.
They can't hear you.
We know we're gonna have two bonds that we're gonna have to pay for. From in December, we're gonna have to pay for the ball fields out there. That's gonna be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. From June, we have an old age tax bond that's gonna be right at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So we know we got those two big projects. And when the CPA was here, you know, she was saying, you just gotta be mindful of our spending in the age tax.
Just to respond, I just.
So those two bills that we gotta pay, if I added it correctly, is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, correct?
Yeah. And you know, we'll, we'll still be collecting money along the road, but those two big bills, we know we're gonna have to pay those. Like I said, the first one is gonna come through in December for those food street ball fields.
These two bills are ongoing yearly, annual bills. They're not going away. And we only have three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars in the account now. So in order to even just pay those two bills, we thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars short. Now you're looking at.
Still be collecting money, you know, monthly as they come in and pay the tax. But I just wanted to let you know that those two bills, you know, we gotta pay though. That first one is gonna come through.
Mr. Gordon.
Okay, so, um, just so we know, whenever we were first discussing the secondary bond to, to build out the fields, then I asked, we did everything we can to have three hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand annually in that account and liquid cash so we can continue to invest in our community. That's why I pushed that so hard and that's why we're taking half of that bond payment out of the, not out of hospitality. We do also add, just so the public knows, we get a little over thirty thousand dollars in that account every month. Month in, month out. We, we pull in four hundred and, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find information.
So, so while you're looking it up, I wanted to clip me. And make, make sure that I'm clear. The bills that we, these large bills that we're saying need to be paid, does, both of them are not coming out of what, hospitality?
That's not true. The first one that we did under Mayor Heinz leadership, first bond, that one one hundred percent comes out of hospitality. The secondary bond that we just secured, that one, half of it comes out of FLO and then half of it comes out of hospitality.
Okay, so the, the last one is, okay. Part of the, the last, part of one of those bills comes out of hospitality and frequently. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
And every month or every two or three months, we're giving money to someone, paying for something out of hospitality.
I agree, we probably.
You spent forty-four thousand dollars out of hospitality. We got one hundred and twelve thousand dollar splash pad bid, bill coming up, out of hospitality. We've already put four hundred thousand in a splash pad. And now another hundred and twelve, a half a million in a splash pad that should have only cost two hundred and fifty thousand. So money just constantly being thrown down, wasted.
So, okay, I, I wasn't aware, have we got another hundred thousand dollar bill for the splash pad?
Yeah, you got the same, you got the same bill for.
Oh, it's in your arm, so.
In your pocket.
We'll be discussing that in a couple of agenda items.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. So with all that being said, I think we just, we just have, we, our budget is not where we would like it to be. And with, these things require planning. It needs proper planning. I, I, I love to like, it would be Christmas every day. I'd keep Christmas lights up in my, on my, my house and everyone else's if I could, year round. It's my favorite holiday. I love the Christmas, I love the spirit of Christmas because people during that time of year seem so much more friendly, more so willing to get along. It, it's just a beautiful time of year and a winter wonderland is awesome. I think we need to strive for that for next year. I just don't think this, because if something happens and we have to fix another, whether it's a road, a, a, a pipe that burst or anything else that comes up, we need to have the funds to do that. And we already have our city, unfortunately, we're sort of strapped for funds and we are, we are having our children and our children's children are gonna have to pay for this debt because we are, we are committed to a forty-year bond. This is, there are just a lot of, a lot of funds. And if we can offset this, if we can sell that piece of property, if we're not gonna use it, so that we can recoup some of those funds, that'll be one thing. But right now, we just unfortunately don't have the funds to do this beautiful work for this year. Cause that's, we're talking two months away. So we need to plan for that. We need to start being proactive and plan for it in advance so that we can do all of this. And like I said, we might have to do something very scaled back this year, but it ha, it, it will have to be very scaled back. We don't wanna have ourselves in a, in a predicament where we can't afford to do what's necessary. Because we've already, in essence, maxed out our credit card and had to get a credit card in your kid's name to get the ball fields to be built. You know, I mean, that's basically how it was explained. You know, when the, when the attorney came, I, I, back then, I was an audience member, sat, sitting back there in the corner and he said, you know, the city couldn't afford, had already maxed out their credit and they couldn't afford the five million dollars. So you establish this, this board and, and to basically, these people that would come and you'd say, oh, you go borrow the money for ours and we pay it back. So that already means we are strapped, essentially. And I don't wanna burden our citizens with something that isn't exactly necessary. We can do this. It's just not gonna happen in this two months. We've gotta get away from the delay, from the immediate gratification. Sometimes it's, it's a delayed gratification. You can still get it, you just don't get it today. You have to be willing to wait and do our due diligence with making it happen. Search for those sponsors and plan accordingly. So next year, man, we can have the biggest and best lights show around. But if we do this now, we would really be burdening our people and that's not something that I think we need to do or that I'm willing to co-sign on.
We have a couple of things real quick. We can't use hospitality fund to fix roads or anything like that. So those are just other pockets that we aren't allowed to spend.
You can, in a sense, for, for tourism.
Mrs. McRaven.
Yeah, you can.
Mrs. McRaven asked, everybody talked one at a time. To clarify, you can only spend hospitality money on hospitality, not on roads or bridges. As far as the property out that everybody voted for, part of that's being sold also. And it works, for Kevin finished his debt, so there'll be funds coming in from that also that could help with this. We're not asking for thirty, forty thousand dollars, we're just asking for something to at least help out. I understand the less. And we're just trying to see if we can get a little bit of funds to get something started over there if we can get whatever it may want.
And that's one more thing I'll say. My, my whole tenure on council, I've been hospitality, I've been quality of life, I've been recreation. I get that. But what you may not know is that when I first got on council, they were bleeding that account for overtime this and overtime that. And I put a stop to it so that we could protect that fund. There's no other fund that I care more about than the hospitality fund. I expect our water and our sewer, those guys to get the funds to keep those operating. I shouldn't have to ask about those. Those things are just naturally be doing, be going on. But one thing for decades we have not done is invest in quality of life and make this a town that we all want to live in. So I understand and I appreciate your fiscal conservatism on the subject. I just see it a little bit differently, so.
All right.
I think if we use a port, a, a.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Then we do have plans to do decoration for Christmas. It doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
This we can, I'm asking now because if we don't do this, do we have Christmas decoration?
The Swedish sanitation department still puts up the.
But do we have that?
I'm sure they do have it, oh, yeah.
That's the part.
I mean, they put it up last year.
But again.
Put the straight lights on.
You got the stuff they put up last year.
My other suggestion was, Hunter is our new person who does our events. He's had a budget to, to, for events. He's done one that maybe we could make one, make this Christmas event part of his, one of his for, because the probability that he's gonna be able to do, I think, pull off another, what, three concerts in the next six months, I think is rather slim. So if we could use a portion of his budget for this project and then we put together another, I don't know, five, six thousand, that's one thing. But not a full, I mean, because this proposal, this is forty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars.
We're not going with that, that's out.
We can't do all of that.
Okay, look, you have offered another means to be able to beautify, enhance what we have. So let's look at that, okay? Look at that. Does that sound like something that we can go with?
Just to clarify, this is not forty-five thousand dollars.
Right, no.
This is one project, one thing they've gone here is three thousand something dollars for some benches and, and balls and stuff. We don't, we don't want that, that's something he said, we don't want. If you total them together, forty-five thousand. The project is if you, you go smaller, cancel. If you go smaller, it's sixteen thousand dollars. If you go a little bit bigger, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, okay? When we stood out there and talked, Mrs. McRaven, we suggested with him that we possibly take some of his funds and shift them over here, it's fine. And we've got parts coming in from the sale of property. We're just looking, asking for a little help. The last few times it's been decorated, it has been hand done by people in the community for help. Volunteers are trying to get it going, going, the trees around the square. Wells Park when we did it was accumulation of people that helped me out there, friends and stuff that went out there and helped us get it lit up. We're just trying to get the city, we're trying to participate in that and help it out. We've got power out there, we need additional power run down through there, which is about forty-eight, forty-eight hundred dollars to run the power to all the trees. But it needs to be done. And we'd like some additional help with that to where we can get something today.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Um, I'm saying, so we could, we got a lot on this agenda. And can we agree then to what the proposal that you have? That we go with the, the one that's sixteen thousand, part of it coming out of, out of Hunter's budget and have a, a, out of hospitality? Would that be good? And then we would have, meant the, what everybody, we wanna look better, let's do something.
We need power, power was like forty-eight hundred dollars. So increase the forty-eight hundred dollars, you're gonna take the forty-eight hundred dollars out of sixteen thousand and drop the lights down to where we got some lights and somewhere.
I'm, I'm just looking at sixteen thousand, seven.
But now that didn't include him going out there and running the lines. We gotta go out there and actually visit the trenches. This is, this is not this guy, this is, I want to have power in these trees.
We would need sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars plus essentially five thousand, which is really less than five thousand, like forty-six, forty-eight hundred or something. So we're looking at roughly twenty K. Take half of it out of Hunter's budget, the other half out of hospitality, is that something? I guess I would just, on a motion, because we have a lot of stuff on the agenda, y'all mind? So I'm going ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid for sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars to also empower our city, city manager to approve the bid for the electricity, which is right at five thousand dollars, which is under the qualifications that she can do that on her own. Half of this funds will be taken out of our original budget for community relations out of Hunter's. Half of this funds will be taken out of our original budget, um, for community relations out of Hunter's budget. The other half would come out of hospitality account.
Second.
Mr. Milligan.
Amelia.
If we are approving sixteen thousand or whatever we are approving for this lighting and for electrical upgrades. And I, I don't wanna do it just for this. We've got, fortunately, how, with the Sweet Potato Festival bringing in a hundred and thirty-five vendors, and we've got, um, issues with power around the square where they may need to plug in. Then evidently, we have not been anything about providing any sponsorship support to them. They didn't, you know, actually ask for that. But I just, as I'm looking to see what's gonna add to the betterment of the city, I don't wanna do this for Christmas and not do something, um, for an event that's coming up, not this weekend, but the next weekend. And it's gonna be evidently larger than it's ever been before. So, I think we've got to be careful. Um, I think Mrs. McRaven is correct in the, um, her analysis, we're strapped for funds. Um, I always like to, to do things that are festive and add to the well-being of everybody. But do we have the money to take care of the pilot club as well as?
I wanna clarify one thing there, Judge. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No.
Um, those lighting fixtures, that's county properties, I would assume that they would fix those lighting fixtures. That shouldn't be our call. Um, if I'm not mistaken, one of the council ladies of the county council actually got that power, put out there, put it all the trees and made all that happen, so.
I thought she was talking about a light poles.
She, yeah, she was.
City, city light poles.
City light poles.
City light poles, that's a fire, she just said it's a problem.
Yeah, she did. Yeah, she said the one by Tenapa and the one, whatever, the one by Tenapa and the one in front of the old B C boards in front of the church, that those two weren't working.
All of that's are just electrical points.
Yeah, and that they haven't yet gone down Pearl Street to make certain that those are working or not. So those are ours.
Okay, but if that's, okay, let me rephrase. If this is, if it's a pole, then that's actually not a cost on us, we get charged monthly from that, so that means that's Duke's power, um, electricity, that's their outlet.
As long as, is, does Duke take care of those kinds of things?
Just like any time we have. And I'm sorry to interrupt again, I'm very familiar with this. When it comes to the light poles, we've had the same thing of our lights that go down towards Walmart where we had the angels and all that stuff. If any of those outlets do not work, we call Duke and they fix outlets. Am I right, Elaine?
Yeah.
So that's not, does not come out of our budget.
I know, that's what I, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is that we didn't, it wasn't the city that, 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 that did. It wasn't the city. We had to call Duke because those was his pole, their, their, their pole. Same thing as it is on. I don't, right now, if those, like, like on our streets, we get a list and turn it in and they send a technician out. Right now.
That's how it works.
Yes. I got two of them in my yards and I, and I pick.
Do you want someone else to vote first, Judge?
I just. I just want to be sure that, you know, those things that are benefiting our city, um, that we know about and also taking care of when we're doing things. I remember we got an email or something, I responded to it, I don't know if anybody else did. We would either be a sponsor at twenty-five hundred or a sponsor at five, but evidently we haven't provided them any funding yet, so.
I'm fine adding that to the agenda, but that's unfortunately, you know, that's another agenda item we want to add to it. I'll be happy to second if we can discuss it.
I'm gonna pay us right now.
Did you say that we were doing ten out of Hunter's budget or?
Half and half.
If we're not comfortable doing it, we're putting on a dinner for next month.
Yeah, let, let's put in on that.
The votes are in the. Are we supposed to get the vote yes or no?
Yeah, this is yes or no vote.
With that, and, and we need to find a, we need to find a sponsor. I think we need, we need to sort of, we need to find a sponsor. What should we do for, do we have to do? For sixteen thousand dollars, which one of these are you talking about, let's give?
So we have a vote on the table. I don't mind if we vote yes or go. Uh, but we have a vote on the table.
Okay, no.
No.
Stickers.
No.
Stickers. Yeah. Hi, motion's carried. All right, um. No. I'm sorry, Mr. Milligan. I have to vote no on this at this time. I'd like for it to be put down on the agenda for, for our next meeting. And let's see what we can do between now and then about how much of your money, Hunter, would we be taking? If we paid half of it out of your budget, how much would that be?
So that would be, uh, I don't know about what the, the power and everything, but sixteen thousand, that'd be about eight thousand or so. And that is budgeted for about forty-two thousand, but we've already had one event, so.
So that didn't carry, that's four no's.
Four yes, four yeses.
Four yes.
One, two, three, four.
Motion's carried. All right, motion's carried, fast. All right, update status reports for, uh, Blue Street Ball Field for San Bruno.
Good evening. I don't know if y'all been down Blue Street. Um, there's a lot of dirt been pushed up, a lot of dirt moved around. Um, you been through areas, it's been fencing, been put up. Uh, we have a lot of trees now, the, 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 there, the, the face of Blue Street has changed. Um, where we're at right now, it's seventy-five percent of the recreation league fields have been completed. So, wha- what they're doing now is they're pouring the floors for the dugouts. The fencing after that will be finished and, and put up. They are working hard on the high school, uh, backstops and, and concession stand and, and that area. They're getting that up, they've got the floor poured, they've got the footers poured for our concession area, um, which is on the same side as the ninth grade campus. They have half of the retention pond built down toward where the W I A buildings were. Um, all in all, the recreation fields are on schedule. We'll play ball on in the spring. I was told that twice today. Uh, tennis court area, which is on the same side as our concession area, is, is, is still in the mix. But it is very wet right now. They're gonna start decorating process hopefully next week. Um, they're gonna get rid of the, the mobile units and stuff that are on the opposite side of the complex, which is near the high school parking lot. That'll be done in the next week or two. Uh, the baseball, the high school baseball field is scheduled to be sodded next week. They are planning to pour at least two fields of dugouts tomorrow. Um, and once those fields are poured and the concrete cures, they'll finish the fencing there. So we'll see, you'll, you'll be able to see exactly what is, is coming about there. Now, they still got a good ways to go, but they have done a lot of work. Hailing did not slow them down. So, in matter of fact, it helped them out because they could see where the drainage issues were. And if you rode by the ball field last week, it looked like a lake.
Slowed me down.
We, we had geese, we had geese swimming in the outfield of the baseball field. So, but they pumped that water out and they've degraded that area and they're gonna start laying sod on it on Monday. Um, lights, they thought might be a problem, not the lights themselves, but the poles. Um, they were being told that they might not get here, the poles themselves, till the end of January, but they were told, matter of fact, they got a phone call while we were talking today, they'll be delivered in October, beginning of November. So the lights will be able to go up on time. Um, it's in good shape right now, like you said today. They're seventy-five percent through with our side. Um, and I told them as long as we got our side done, we, we would help them, we'd help, we'd help the high school play somewhere. But, uh, they're, they're gonna have the high school field done and time for them to play too. It's gonna be a beautiful, um, addition. It's, it's not, don't mistake that we're not re, there's not a new footprint. It's the same ball fields. It looks, it's gonna be the same, same footprint, but it's not the same ball fields. Um, it's brand new everything. And once they get the fencing in, we're gonna start working on our end fields, we'll start grading, my department will start working on the end fields and grading and getting everything ready for the season at that time. Um, we have started already putting some sponsorship packets together. I should have y'all something in the next month, maybe by the next meeting. Um, that y'all can look at and give ideas to and maybe that we can, uh, approve something. Just some, we're not gonna make a ton of money, but we're gonna make a little bit of money and help out, get some stuff for our kids out there. So, that's, that's all I have for Blue Street. Yes, sir.
Um, is there an architectural rendering that the project looks like parking and all that?
I have an architectural rendering that is, that is what something is gonna look like. I don't think, I think if I give it to you and you, you get it, you won't see it, but what I'm planning on doing is at the Sweet Potato Festival, I'm gonna set a table up and I'm gonna have all that stuff there so people can come by and see it. And I'm gonna have the overhead view of everything that, um, that we've got. I'm gonna have that available so if they wanna take out the others from my system, come by and get a copy of it again. Uh, but I will get you, uh, whether it looks like that when it's done, I don't know.
There will be parking.
There will be plenty of parking at this point.
So how many ball fields do we get?
We get seven. We get five of our, oh, we did lose the Lions League field a little bit. But we get use, when, when the high school season is over, we, we get use of the high school softball field and the high school baseball field to play our programs on.
Do our programs overlap with high schools?
Our little ones won't be affected by that. Our older kids don't overlap because the same kids play in high school.
So is seven fields that are sort of dedicated to us? Are you talking seven fields total?
Seven fields total. Five, five will be used to march on, five that we have sole use of.
Okay.
And then the two after that will play our thirteen through eighteen league on, it's Legion ball and that stuff.
Okay, so you have, you got five.
We actually, we actually got five.
So only one had to be.
Right.
Sort of cut out because of the potential.
We got five, we're, we're holding on to five fields, but we also gain, gain use.
But we have access to the other two, so you're saying.
After the season's over, we have ours. After the high school season is over, we, according to the lease, those ball fields turn over to us and we use them as we see.
Okay. And we got parking lots for, our, our fields have parking lots, but are they paved parking lots?
High school parking lot is paved.
Let me, for around our fields.
There'll be one parking lot that is down toward the tennis court end now, that's gonna be a grass parking lot again. The other side where we have a field and the high school fields are, that'll be paved parking. So there'll be two paved parking areas and then there'll be some grass parking.
Concrete, maybe eight, white concrete where there's nothing other than the sidewalks taking some of the parking spots there where. Y'all spread your life.
Tennis courts are going to happen out there now, is what you're saying?
Still up in the air. Still up in the air. Still with you, honey.
Well, last night at the meeting, the legislative meeting, uh, the, uh, the senator said that the million dollars that, um, we requested is, is on the way. The check's been written. So it was our five million plus, his, plus his million, so we're sort of six million in.
My half million and it means six and a half.
Six and a half million. How much?
They're paying one point three nine five.
One point four five.
And they own the property?
Yeah.
They've owned the property forever. It's a forty-year lease.
It's the same lease that we had before, except it's a little more stern. It's the same partner we've had for forty-five years. We haven't changed anything. They had use of it before. We had use of their stuff before. Nothing has changed other than the writing that's in that contract.
What appears to be, what appears to be why we, why we pay five million and y'all only, that's all, it's no big deal. You know, I mean, I mean, even though things change.
This was presented, this was presented to y'all, this was, wait, this was presented to councils and voted on by council and proved by council. I can't answer that question.
How many, how many dugouts we getting?
Neighbor field has two dugouts.
So we getting?
Ten dugouts.
Ten dugouts, yeah.
Brand new lawns.
Brand new dugouts.
Brand new dugouts.
How about concession stands?
Brand new restroom, brand new concession stand.
Brandon plumbing for the restroom?
Absolutely, we're good for it.
Going back to concession stands, you've been using food trucks or?
I think we're gonna do a compilation of the two. Uh, we're gonna do, we're gonna continue to use food trucks for, for twofold. It's easy for us to use food trucks because we're not, we're not obligated to pay people that work a concession stand. And it helps out the community because we got all these awesome viewers that have food trucks now and use it a chance to sell food. And the kids love it.
But you still let them use some eating.
We're, eventually, we're gonna, we're gonna have concessions, maybe to sell some drinks or something like that to begin with. We're not going full bore, we're gonna still lean on food trucks.
Right. I just, uh, uh, just to clarify because, and I'm not just adding humor, but, um, we, uh, council has been, uh, charged us making some, um, kind of had, uh, financial deals and this, that and the other. However, when it comes to recreation, it does not, it never matters to me. Yes, I voted for it because I know what that does for our community and those children.
Absolutely.
Same thing I'm saying about voting for the lighting. I know what folk are talking about. They don't know about all of us and the money we don't have. But when they see some kind of new, something being improved in this city, they appreciate it. I get the feedback about it. Those are things that I like. Yeah, we made a bad, we can make a bad, a bad decision. I just don't see it when I see our children, our glowing. I don't, I don't, I don't, I think it is, it's okay. Yes, I voted for that, but I tell the question because that's what thought everybody might.
I know, I know.
We spent five million and they only got one million. Why, we don't have it, but it don't matter.
Maybe they'll throw a little more and give kids some tennis courts where their kids play tennis, you know?
Don't count them out.
Nothing has been.
Oh, I know.
I know, I'm just making a little jest here too.
Nothing has been made out.
I understand.
It's still open, there's still time for that to be done.
Yeah.
They'll figure it out.
It's getting figured out.
They'll figure it out.
I just, we are moving.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Purchase some, uh, property, Country Club store pump station.
Why would that not, I ain't gonna vote for that now.
Good evening. I can't, here tonight to ask you all to three items. First, we wish to purchase property at the, uh, Country Club, where the Country Club pump station is located. I'm asking you to allow the current city manager into, enter into a contract to purchase that property for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Isn't your competition already on that property?
There is.
Why don't we need to bring it on? It's been there for about forty years, right? It's been sitting in the city for forty, fifty years.
For us to get any grant money to do anything with it, we'll have to own the property where it is. For us to, uh, rebuild the current system, we'll need to, uh, disturb more property out there and we don't own it.
So it's all by an individual?
That property is worth five thousand dollars?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
You asked him for twenty-five thousand dollars. When the tax assessor office says worth. When the tax assessor office says worth five thousand.
The law's, the tax assessor.
So you're saying who wants to pay five, twenty-five dollars for it?
I've never seen a lot in the Country Club go for less than twenty-five thousand, just to be honest with council.
Is this the entire lot, or we getting just that portion?
The entire lot.
And how large is the lot?
It's a lot.
It's less than an acre, that's for sure.
That's what a lot is.
To be able to get the grant money, we have to be able to own property.
For us to do anything to, we gotta own property, for us to even walk to, to, to go out there and do anything, we're walking on private property.
Well, they've been servicing it for the last fifty years, walking on.
Has anyone tried to negotiate with them, though, to see if they would take anything less than that, since it's for, uh?
We looked at, at, compared sales at the Country Club, that's normally where a lot goes for out there.
I'm just asking if someone tried to negotiate with them to see if they were willing to.
We, we first approached them to see if they were willing to sell it at all.
So did the city manager?
And they said yes, and they, they gave us a contract to purchase the property in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Was the city manager involved in this negotiation?
We didn't do any negotiations.
Was the city manager involved in this at all?
We had formed her, uh, the, um, that we had asked the seller, the property owner.
So.
So I think this needs to be handled by the city manager. So I think the city manager need to go back and talk to, to whoever owned this property and see what, um, they would do for the city instead of somebody else speaking for the council and the city manager.
He say you agree. You do?
Yeah, I, no one spoke with them, we just said, you don't want yourself, that's all.
Eventually, we're gonna have to do something, if y'all want to ask them if they'll take a little bit less and have the city manager approach them, I got no problem with that. I do know we're, we got sewage issue there, just like we have, have had throughout our city. And if we're gonna make sure we have a sewer on one side of town, I hope we do it everywhere, but y'all wanna wait for a little while and see if we can negotiate a lower price, uh, um, I think that's, that's fine.
You're not going to fix the sewer all over town? We have to fix the waterway, it was happening with it. There's still a dumb sewer in the street.
So we're asking, um, prison to, uh, address property owner?
We wanna give her a figure? We wanna give her a figure or just let?
Let's see, let's see what can.
Suggesting we could start throwing out figures, that we do it in executive session, we don't want small negotiations, but giving technical figures.
Doesn't she need one before she goes and exercises that?
We might need to, we got them in the agenda, but. We may have. Change that water meters and purchase some fire hydrants, use the capital improvement funds?
Yes, you all approved to purchase, uh, some fire hydrants, several city council meetings got. We have money in a capital improvement account with the South Carolina Secretary of State. I asked about how much money that was back when John Payne was here, he looked it up, told me it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And back in February of this year.
Three eight five, no, three eight five eight twenty three.
So it's grown, which it does.
It's three what, what's the price?
Three eight five.
Three eight five eight two three.
What we're asking is for the current city manager to acquire three hundred thousand dollars worth of those funds and place them into the water department's budget to purchase fire hydrants with and to purchase new water meters.
That's what you do, you don't wanna do that. Well, that's, that's, I know we need new water meters, and we talked about this. Uh, I read your email, so I have a question, just out of curiosity, because I, I noticed when I was reading this, you said that, um, the city upgraded the system by installing the AMI, which is the automated meter intelligent receiver. But has not installed any AMI meters. And that the approximate three thousand census water meters, the warranty, um, on those AMR census meters had expired around twenty twenty. But then I got a little confused, because it says that you wanna buy two hundred and fifty of the AMI, but two fifty of the AMR, why are we not buying all of the AMI if we upgrade the system, why we're buying the old ones?
They're about seven hundred and fifty dollars in solid, and the AMRs are about three hundred and fifty dollars in solid.
So we upgraded the si, I'm saying upgraded the system.
We don't need them for everybody, we don't need them for people that, that had never been turned off and on. What we need them for are the frequent rereads and, uh, frequent disconnects, that's where we need them most. And mostly that's in the, it's in certain address, it's all of the renters in town that we turn on and off. Uh, several other towns are taking this approach, Lake City is one, and they turned, they changed out some three hundred and seventy-five of their frequent customer service issued people that are on the delinquent account and just on and off, off. And in that way, we eliminate that stress and the expense of going to that address to turn them off and then going back to reconnecting service.
So you'd be able to, you're saying you'd be able to do that, basically by touch of a button, from the computer?
Yes, it can actually be set automatically, just like the, uh, the telephone that everybody has, that they have paid by a certain date, that it just goes off on that date, and it won't go off completely. What we can do, well, we can do that, we can turn them off completely, but, but disconnects will be, for the delinquent accounts, the amount of water will go down to a trickle. So they can actually fill a glass of water and take medication if they need to, they're not gonna die, because they can't get too water. They may be able to flush the toilet a few times a day, but they're not gonna be able to take a shower or wash clothes or do what they normally do with, with water. But, but they will be able to stay alive and stay and keep decent hygiene. So, uh, and we don't have that capability now.
So has the system upgrade only been done in a particular section? Or did when you upgraded, when the system was upgraded, was it upgraded all the way across the, the city?
No, ma'am, what we upgraded was just the devices that are on our towers, that we had to replace the ones that were there. So instead of replacing those with just AMRs, we replaced them with AMIs, at the same cost. So there was no reason to not upgrade. We had to do that a few years back, our, our, our units were going out, it was time to change those out.
Okay.
So instead of changing those back to the AMR, we changed them to the AMIs.
Did you do that across the entire city?
Only the device on the tower.
Oh, so this.
So it, it will read them all, any of them.
So you can put them all the way across town? Just as, just the same?
If we could port it, and there we're talking about two million dollars or so.
So, but you also said that this.
I came to this council and told you all a while back that we needed to do.
Yeah, so the AMR systems, you said are up, that are expired, how, you said the system was expired, I'm just, I'm just trying to gain some clarity here.
Okay.
You said it was expired.
I'm gonna say that it was two G, I'm, I'm thinking that's what it was, and they, and they went to five G. So to do, and they were eliminating all the two G stuff that was going white. So we had to change out that stuff that we had on the tower, or we wouldn't have been able to, to get the sewers.
But the, I'm talking, the AMR that you said is expired, if you buy new AMR meters, if you're saying that the system had expired, how are you gonna be able to use these new meters if you said the warranty and it expired in twenty twenty?
They'll be read by the AMI.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to find.
It can read either one, yeah.
That's what I'm trying, okay, thank you, that's what I'm trying to do.
So what's the cost for a meter?
The meter alone, or you want the meter, the, the communication device? Well, let me put it this way, the AMI meters are about four hundred and eighty dollars, and then there's a communication device that goes along with it that makes it almost six hundred and fifty dollars. The eye barrels are about three hundred and fifty dollars. And there's a hundred and forty dollar communication device to go with them. Now, when we talk about the change out of meters, though, we're not just talking about the meters and the communication devices. A lot of these, a lot of these sites where the meters are, let's call it that, weren't upgraded years ago when y'all changed out the meters, some of them were, and some of them were not. And when you go to change out one of these meters, there's really the, the, the different scenarios would be endless to what issues we're gonna find. A, a broken meter box, for instance, a forward meter box, and we have a good many that are in forward meter box, are three hundred and fifty dollars. So if we have to change out a forward meter box, it adds three hundred and fifty dollars to the cost of changing out the meter. Some of these old systems are straight lines, where they just come right off the main line, come into the meter box in a straight line, go out in a straight line, straight to the house. When you take those apart, if anything's torquing on that, for instance, a tree root is pushing against the park, and that's just one scenario, there are endless numbers of scenarios. When you take this meter out of there, those two connections may not be lined up anymore. You may not get a meter right back into there, we're gonna have to do some other work to it. A good many of these are on something called a meter setter, which has a gooseneck looking thing that has a, a curb stop which is a turn off valve for that service. And it's connected with a brass rod at the bottom of it, and all these, all these parts and pieces are soft brass, so they've been torqued down and left torqued for many, many years, and when we go to loosen them up, they could come apart. So, but like I said, the, the scenarios for what parts and pieces we may have, have to replace is just endless.
So with the funds that you're requesting, how many meters would you actually be able to install?
What we wanna do is we wanna buy fifty of each, and go after it and change it, and to see what actual expenses we have after changing a hundred meters. And that should give us a pretty good idea of what it's gonna take to change the rest of them. At some point, the city is gonna have to go ahead and change out all of your water meters. There are good meters going white, when I first came here, we had about a hundred that we read them up. Now we've got about three hundred. And that is an overwhelming task to go out and recreate, we have the entire staff of the water department reread meters for two days, that's what we call it, rereads, when we go back out, and we open up the lot, open up the boxes and manually read them, and we bring right in the readings, and we bring them back in, we compare them to the communications and all that. And we've got about three hundred or more of those that we do every month now, overwhelming job. So I would like to and hope to at least change out those three hundred and try to keep up with how many are going out per month in the future, if nothing else, but at some point, we're gonna have to change them all out. And I can't tell you what the expense is gonna be, and I can't tell you how many we're gonna be able to get done, and I can't tell you how long it's gonna take either, until we do some of them here. If I had the history of being here for ten or fifteen years and doing these, or twenty years and doing these, I can tell you a little bit more about them, but, and we may run into, there are certain neighborhoods like the, uh, uh, casual ferry road, those are all straight connections. We're gonna have to do something practically to all of those, we know that, but the other neighborhoods, they're, they're in pretty good shape, some of them.
So all of the, I'm clarifying, I'm trying to get this, if you want three hundred and seventy-five dollars, three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
No, ma'am, I want three hundred thousand dollars, I wanna leave.
How much this?
Think about that later, twenty-three dollars.
Yeah, I wanna leave some money in there for rainy day fun, just in case we have a big meter, say Dixie go, go out or, or, or meter in laundry or something go out, where I wanna deplete the whole front, I wanna leave some money in there.
So you want three hundred, three, three hundred thousand, with two fifty-seven, you wanna purchase the new meters and the apparatuses, is that right? And fifty-three for the fire hydrants? Now, when you're talking about, so, and that gives you enough cushion, then from what you're saying, that if there's anything else broken, you'd be able to fix it, but you're only gonna purchase a hundred meters to begin with?
If we don't want to, whenever you purchase, whenever we purchase the meters, the warranty starts running on immediately. So we don't wanna purchase a thousand of them and then sit on the shelf for, for three years or something. We, we would purchase them at a, and I say a hundred, it might be, if they come in boxes of forty-eight or whatever, we might be buying ninety-six at a time, the, the two begin with, you know, that, that count, I guess.
Okay.
Who's gonna be installing these meters?
Uh, the current water and sewer department staff. Yeah, you, yeah, you got a question?
Sure. I haven't been able to say anything, let me go ahead, sorry.
Then why would labor install for new meters be included in this, we're gonna all have to pay them anyway?
We, we don't know that, like I said, we, we don't know every scenario that's gonna happen whenever we go to these meters. If we, if we break some out, we're gonna prop, and we don't know that, we're not gonna have to go into some sidewalks, uh, and replace them after we get through. We, we don't know what all the scenarios are gonna be, Miss Backside, you'd have to have a crystal ball on that side.
So it wouldn't be, if you, in a perfect world, you wouldn't have any labor costs, you would be available for hydrants if you don't have to hit a.
Well, it was just a model, I didn't know.
You get a line and six inches of rubber to before you have calcium money in.
Go ahead, come on, someone.
Um, just like last month, I am interested in being fiscally responsible, following our budget. But, um, last month, we spent fifty-three thousand, now we're talking about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which was budgeted? Is any of this budgeted at two fifty-seven?
No, this, this is money that we, we, we char, y'all, the city of Arlington started charging a capital improvement fund on the utility and services bill some years ago. That money was, uh, invested with the South Carolina Secretary of State. Okay, that's where this money is, it's, it's not wasted, what we're asking for is, is to take the money out of the investment at the South Carolina Secretary of State and inject it into our budget. Now, if we don't use it all in this fiscal year, that needs to roll over in the next year for this project too.
What, what my real question, and I'll just get right to it, um, I've heard that we're finding some different grant opportunities, and I just asked that before we write the check, that we just see if we can find a grant that potentially can match this, so we can save ourselves money and, and go further.
I don't know of any grant monies for water meters, and, and, and I, I, since I've been here, I've, I've studied, I've been involved with more grants than I ever have in my career, I think. I have bounced around on, on all of these grants that I've gotten since I've been here before, but I've never had this many right in a row, back to back.
So water meters.
But there aren't any out there for water meters that I know of, and, and we need to do this as quickly as we can, the, the customer service department for the water and sewer department are just overwhelmed.
I'm not saying that I'm not gonna support this project without a grant, I just said there is an opportunity, I would love for us to apply, of course, but if we don't have them, then we gotta spend a dollar.
If there was, we, we would.
Is there potentially a grant opportunity for fire hydrants?
Yeah, not that I know of.
That's all.
You need to see somebody out there?
I'm sure, are you asking for three hundred or three hundred and ten?
Three hundred and ten thousand.
I got a question, hold on.
Please, you're a one thousand.
Let me ask Miss Leger, since you write grants, do you know if there's any grants, or are they grants for hydrants or meters?
Yeah, grants for meters.
Where? What's it called?
Where from?
You don't answer that question, the question is, do you know if there are any grants?
I'm sorry.
That's absurd.
If we have information that can help the city save a dollar, why would we not answer it?
Because the city refused to allow Clayton Consulting Corporation to do business with them, I was told I could not do that business, so that's why.
By who?
By Howard Gordon, because he's, he called me, and it's recorded, that when this mayor and city council took over, he called me and said, this mayor and this city council said they did not want to do any more work with Clayton Consulting. with Clayton Consulting Corporation. And from that day, Clayton Consulting has not written one single grant for the city of Durham. That's what goes on in the city of Durham.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And that's true.
Now, I, I said there aren't any. We, we could possibly get a USDA rule development loaning grant to do water meters. But if, if we did that, we would, the cost of doing that is something that we've already looked at doing, and it's pretty expensive to get yet. I don't know if we would wanna do it for this small project, but we have looked at doing it for like an eight million dollar project, and because they're federal funds, we can fund CDPGs out of that USDA and REA grants. And I've done that in other areas. And we, and we've looked at doing that and putting together a, a twelve and a half million dollar, what I'm gonna call a completion project for the city of Darlington, complete all the issues of water and sewer. And, uh, by borrowing and, and getting granted eight million dollars from the USDA, in that, we would, uh, uh, have to pay back sixty percent of it, which is four million eight hundred thousand of the eight million dollars. And then we would, uh, uh, take six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money and fund two CDPGs and two REA grants. Also, we can fund those out of federal, with federal money, but we can't fund those with state, state grants. So, we're, and, and that's, and it's really way too early to talk about that. I talk about that almost every day, at least twice a week, with somebody gathering more information. But we are not at a point where we can let that cat out of the bag and start talking about it and deciding what we're gonna do with it. It's just way too early yet. But we need this, we need to start changing these water meters as soon as possible. And we have this money, and, and when I first got here, we were told that that was, had, had begun to replace the water meters. So let's use it to replace the water meters.
Sounds good to me.
You don't have to transfer it from, uh, the local government fund to the water department per se. Just transfer it, I can transfer it from the local government fund to the cities.
I understand, I, I, I understand, but that's your business, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to get in there, I'm just.
Well, I'll just transfer it.
I'm just trying to explain it there.
To the city's account, but he was saying transfer it to the water department, and then I have to transfer it out there, and then transfer it, so that will eliminate the step.
What I meant was, show it in our budget.
Yeah.
And a transfer. And then next year, if we don't use it all, it needs to go into next year's budget.
Oh, use it.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, I'll give you, um, a copy of the name when I do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the funds that are being held in the state for the purchase of new meters and other apparatus and labor if necessary to install new water meters, as well as, uh, and also to, which is around two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and to include fifty-three thousand for fire hydrants.
I'll second.
Mrs. Backus? Ms. Free? Ms. Gordon? Uh, Ms. Carey, thank you. Current increase of bulk rate, the bulk water rate?
You all have gone through several rate increases prior to my arrival, and since my arrival, we had one too. But what we neglected to increase was the bulk water rate. This is water that we sell mostly to, uh, people paving streets. They come in and, and wanna, wanna buy twenty, thirty thousand gallons of water, transporting two or three to five, ten thousand gallons at a time. And recently, we sold half a million gallons to the city of Florence through a, a, their contract. And, uh, what I'm asking you to do is to increase that bulk water rate.
And it's only used when someone asks about it?
Yeah, they, they come in and, um, and we catch them from time to time stealing water, and, and we make them come in and pay for it, an administration fee. We go out and install a fire hydrant, a, a meter, and they're able to fill their big, their tanks rapidly with the fire hydrants. And we, we read the meter before and after, and they're charged for it.
So the rate that you are proposing, is that sort of in line with what our neighboring communities are charging municipalities? Like what, I mean, we, we sold what, five, half a million gallons to Florence for two thousand five, two thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars? Little or nothing?
Right.
So, um, this, you said.
In comparison, their, their contractor charged them a huge amount of money.
Fifty-four thousand, you said?
Yeah.
Wow. So.
This, this was transportation cost, but now they're charging me more than that, you know, but, uh.
So this eight dollars and seventy-four cents per one thousand gallons for this, is that sort of in line with what maybe what Florence is selling their water for, or?
I didn't ask Florence, asking Florence isn't, is.
I mean, not necessarily for, but I mean, other municipalities.
I call folks are, are same stuff.
Okay.
And, and I looked at what we were charging our rates, and, and we're already charging this eight dollars and seventy-four cents to people living outside of the city for sewer services per gallon, so, I mean, per thousand gallons. I just thought that was just a good rate to charge. And if you count that up for what we charged before, um, it's, it's a considerable increase. We can't let it go too high, they'll steal from us all the time. And, uh, and we wanna encourage them to come in and set up an account and pay for it legitimately, you know?
Thank you. I don't have to be bad. Unless, Angel, are you asking, Councilwoman, are you asking that we go around the surrounding community at our side and see what their rate?
Oh, I was just curious where that number came, I, I saw where he said the number, when he reflected. But I'm going to, is that still competitive, or are we still well under what people would charge? I mean, can we get?
They're gonna buy a workforce from paving in town, back over there, but they're gonna wanna get it to the closest place. Their, their expense is rolling anywhere to get, you know, they wanna be as quick as they can turnaround. That's a very low increase for them.
Is it a north increase?
I, I, I think so, yes, sir.
Just make sure.
It's a good place to start.
Let's just.
We might look at that administration fee for people that do it regularly. For instance, uh, C.R. Jackson, you know, the paper, they're, they're purchasing water from the wrongs all the time. We've got a couple of landscape guys that buy from us a good bit. We've got helicopter service that, that buys it to spray tower lines and what, whatnot with some sort of pesticides or whatever. So we, we do sell them, um, some bulk water, and we need to adjust those rates.
Make sure they're competitive.
Yeah, and keep them from, would do.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the increase in bulk water rates to be a fifty dollar administration fee and eight dollars and seventy-four cents per one thousand gallons of water. And I would also ask while we're implementing this, that you do further check with the municipalities on our side, let's see. Because we can change it again if we need, if we found we need to.
Appreciate that follow-up.
I'll second.
Backus? Ms. Free? Gordon? Figure, uh, Ms. Carey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sugar, did you get water on, power on?
Uh, we got power on today temporarily for about four hours, but it's off again.
You been out of power since Thursday?
Uh, I hope so.
I said you been out of power since Thursday?
We've been out of power since Friday morning.
All right.
Yeah, in both places. Uh, no, no communications until Sunday, and, and no hot food, and, uh, no traffic lights work.
And where's this?
Union, South Carolina, and, and, uh, Mahone and Mothville. Of course, Mothville doesn't have a traffic light, we're kind of small.
My niece came in, she lives in Green Village with her daughter, so they just had to come, because they've been out since Friday as well. And the school, the clothes of she and her daughters with me.
Some of the places I've gone by childhood, two of them, my white daughter and I.
We have a, uh, next status report for, uh, splash pad and next status and, uh, estimated cost, Mrs. Jones.
Um, good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, great.
Um, so, good news is, we received, um, word from workex that they will replace, um, the pump that used to be replaced, and in accordance with, um, DEHEC, along with the flow meter, it's not gonna be charged to us. So we're just gonna take the, what's currently installed out and put in, um, what is combined with DEHEC. Um, and so, um, with that information, the engineer, um, will be resubmitting with the changes that they're requiring, um, back to DEHEC, um, so that we can get the permit to continue the project. Um, and so this is just an outline of what, um, the costs are gonna be to bring this project to completion, um, to include, uh, making the necessary changes to the bathrooms, to make, um, one ADA compliant and the other one compliant with DEHEC's requirements, um, adding drain mines, emergency stops, and, and different things that replace some piping that was, um, installed, um, which is gonna require strategic cutting of the current concrete, replacing the piping and then re-poring, um, and then fencing signs and different things. So, um, plumbing, um, and electrical to, um, get it completed. And so hopefully, in the next, um, week or two, we'll get that permit from DEHEC, and we'll be able to move forward. It's gonna cost, um, a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents to finish the project.
So at completion of this project, the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars splash pad will be at five hundred thousand?
I'm not exact. Um, I believe it's right around there. I'm, I'm, I'm not, um, I'm not sure what the initial costs were or what, um, council approved. I only know what it's gonna cost to fix it.
You could've got two splash pads. We're losing all this money on.
That's just a waste. We do have a valuable learning experience here.
That's a waste.
It's, it, yeah, but none of council's shoulders. Um.
Those are council's shoulders.
What money do you need by the end of?
So, um, I'll have to draft a timeline. We're definitely gonna need the fifty-eight, eight-seventy in order, once we get the permit, so that we can get the lines dug and replaced. Um, once that goes in, simultaneously, we can be doing the electrical and the plumbing, uh, while he's doing that, because they will be working in different areas. Um, and then, once the plumbing, electrical, and the, um, lines get replaced and get re-poured, um, then we can start looking at, the bathrooms will be done then, the, um, storage, chemical storage area will, everything will, most of that will be done. So we're looking at fifty, about eighty thousand dollars right away. And then, um, once the fencing, the signs and all of that get up, the last thing that we're gonna do is, um, finish the parking lot.
The parking lot's already approved, also.
Do we have a?
Well, the parking lot that was approved is for a gravel lot.
Yeah, nothing, not the concrete.
Right, nothing, not a concrete parking, but we're gonna have to, at the very least, concrete, um, so part of that paving, we'll have to break that out, the paving and the concrete for the ADA, for the, the accessible. And then the concrete that goes all the way around the existing, um, what was a concession stand bathroom, concrete's gonna have to go all the way around that, um, for accessibility. And then, um, in the sphere of ADA compliance, a sidewalk, um, that will attach that concrete to two shelters so that our handicapped citizens are able to also enjoy, um, the splash pad, or at the very least, being able to see their grandchildren or children enjoy the splash pad.
So if we wouldn't have submitted the proper paperwork to DEHEC, before this splash pad was installed, submitting the engineer designs to DEHEC before this splash pad was installed, we would be in this mess.
I can't say whether or not.
Cause we would not submit.
I can't say whether or not, um, the dollar figure would be different.
Fifty-eight thousand different.
Sir?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight thousand different. It would definitely be fifty-eight thousand dollars different, um, because.
It would be more than fifty-eight thousand.
Well, and, and once again, I don't know what was spent prior to this or not, because, um, the project didn't go through planning. And so had the, they had decided to do the project.
Can you start over with that segment? Would you start over, I'm sorry, I.
Now, I can't speak to what happened before now. That the project, had it gone through planning, the planning phase, to do the due diligence of what would be needed, we would've known the amount of electrical work that was gonna be needed, the amount of plumbing work that was gonna be needed, the building, and, you know, the size, and the, the storage, and the, you know, going from the size containers for chemicals now to a smaller, so that, you know, so we would've known all of this. And the plumbing for the, you know, hose bibs that go on, that we needed on the other side of the splash pad, and, you know, ADA compliance, and, you know, concrete, um, walkways and, so had, you know, then, I think that the dollar figure probably would've been very similar, minus the fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and nineteen cents to make the corrections. Um, but I think that council would've had a full vision.
But if we would've pulled a permit from DEHEC?
The, the permit from DEHEC would've, would've been the same.
And then we would've submitted the engineering drawings.
Well, so what should, so.
They would've.
So what should've happened is, the decision to make a, a splash pad, it was the brainchild. And then you go and find out how much it's gonna cost, where it's gonna be, and how much it's gonna cost to not just, um, have the splash pad, but what everything else is, all the other things. Like when you guys were talking about the Christmas lights, that you guys are gonna have to pay, while there's lighting there, you're gonna have to pay more for lighting. And so you have all of those things itemized down, and then have an engineer draw it out and submit all of those plans to DEHEC. So, the cost for the permit for DEHEC would've been the same, because I used, I, you know, got with Lee, and we combined all these numbers, and that's the number that we gave to DEHEC for the cost of the project. And so that permit would've been the same. So, you know, there would've been, it would've been very similar to what it is now. I just think that council would've had, it would've known it going into it.
So are you saying we never submitted anything to DEHEC?
Prior? No, sir.
So it would've, it would've caused less, because now we got to go in and break up the concrete to fix something in the ground. Concrete would've never been poured, if we'd've followed procedure. DEHEC would've said, do this, 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 this.
That's right.
Before we.
It would've been in the plans, it would've been in the plans.
Right.
We would've.
So we would've been at five hundred thousand.
Well, that's why I'm saying that DEHEC, the, the plans would've been done, and so if you backed up the fifty-eight, eight-seventy, nineteen, then, because the, the pipes would've been put in properly to the other.
And the concrete would've been poured.
Right.
Until everything was.
Uh, right, but the, the.
Until DEHEC said, yes, go ahead.
Right, but the re-poring of the concrete is in that eight, fifty-eight, so that would, put that number out. And you still had to pay for concrete, the original concrete.
Did we issue a building permit?
Um, so, the answer to that.
Did the city of Darlington issue a building permit?
The answer to that is yes.
Did we do it without DEHEC?
So, the answer to that is yes, for a building. I didn't know that this, for, um, Mr. Scott's.
Building.
Building, that he built, for the pump house.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't.
This project started, and I didn't even know that it started. I didn't know that, I didn't have plans in my office, nobody came to my office. I had no idea that it started until after it already started.
I sat in your office and talked to you about this before any dirt was ever moved. And so I guess my question wasn't asked appropriately. Did the contractor who installed the splash pad, not a building, did he get a building permit? Did he get a permit from the city of Darlington?
After it was already started.
Hold on, we let a project start without a building permit? There's a block, less than a block from here?
Well, absolutely, someone let it start, and it wasn't until I drove by and saw it, saw it being worked on. For one thing, for another thing.
Hold on. I'm sorry.
Uh, we don't, the building, building and codes doesn't have a swimming pool code book. Swimming pools is not some. Swimming pools is not something that is done through the building and codes department because that's not something that I regulate. That's something that DHEC regulates. It's not regulated by my department. I don't have code books with regards to how it's put in, what's put in. I don't do planning review over swimming pools, um, and splash pads. That's something that is done through DHEC. The only reason that there was, that I had had him pull a permit was to ensure that he did the other processes that should have been done, i.e. obtaining a business license and providing general liability insurance to the city to ensure that all of the contractors that we use have their proper credentials with the city. And, and because in the past, projects have been done in the city without, um, any documentation. So when someone comes and says, well, when was this done? We have no idea when it was done. We think maybe it was around here, but we're not exactly sure. So I, I do a permit only so that there's documentation that the city can go back and say, when was this done? And we can say, this is when it was done. But this, but building and codes department does not regulate swimming pools on a commercial level because that's done by DHEC.
Okay, so did we approve permit for the construction of the splash pad?
After it had already started.
So the, the contractor was out there moving dirt?
Without general liability insurance, submitted to the city and without a business license. And when I found out that that happened, then I had him come in. And then we started working backwards.
That was then after, I guess, yeah, you had met on the subject and we approved?
Absolutely. I met with the mayor on the subject. I've met with you on the subject. But that never, but it being meeting with someone on the subject doesn't mean that I'm aware that it's been approved and that contractors have been, um-
Oh, no, no, I'm, all I'm asking, and I'm sorry to keep interrupting, just, there's a reason I'm asking the questions is, we have a building inspector's office that's supposed to help with our permit and make sure people have the proper permits so it protects our citizens and their bond and all that stuff. But he went and started working before he even went and got a building permit, business license or any of that stuff? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, now, I have one last thing. Is he bonded?
He has general liability insurance.
Okay, if, and so you're saying it was his responsibility to then get a permit from DHEC?
It would have been his responsibility to get a, a DHEC, a permit from DHEC. However, he is not a licensed pool contractor certified with DHEC.
So, so, so what you're saying is splash pad, he illegally installed a splash pad, basically.
Well, I'm not going to say that he illegally, he did not knowingly illegally install the splash pad. He has, he has installed several splash pads in neighboring counties. The difference between the splash pad that he installed for other municipalities and other jurisdictions and ours is that all of those were single-use splash pads. Our splash pad is a reclaim system. And so he did not realize, and I believe nobody else that was involved in his hiring realized, that the difference between single-use splash pads and reclaim splash pads, um, is where that triggers DHEC because DHEC considers a reclaimed splash pad as a swimming pool. And it has its own classifications and its own regulations. And so, I believe in talking to the people that have been involved, nobody realized that this splash pad triggered DHEC because it's a reclaim system. Everyone believed that, okay, it, splash pad is a splash pad and all splash pads are equal. And so, as far as the contractor goes, the contractor did put in the splash pad according to the plans that were given to him.
Now, we have gone through all of this. We have given detail. Here's my thing about you, Brian, and Mayor. The questions you're asking her, you seem like you're quite aware. How come you all didn't do this? Since this is not nothing, a normal that we have had a pad. It wasn't our, our swimming pool that we've here, never did go through this. I mean, they are outlining this. And because the question you're asking is like you're putting some kind of blame on the, on, on the, on our, our department. And I kind of just think, just how she's explained, folk didn't know. But it was insisted upon and got to get this type of pool, this splash pad. First it was to be for one place, now you would have got, got it over there. There was a lot of things there that you all were quite involved with. It would appear that the same questions you're asking her, you said in her office, that you all would have known that yourself. Or you would investigate it. Don't put it on it. We already, we done been through it. It's been a problem. This is now, but at least we are on the right track. It's going to cost us money. We got these people on the right track. We're getting the proper, uh, permits and whatever. But I don't, I just don't want no more blaming on anyone. If we gonna, we done come this far, we not going to stop with it. We going for it. Let's do it. Get done with this.
I want to clarify something. Um, there is no blame. I got this email halfway through the day. I spoke with her beforehand and we both were talking about how the city can do things better, how they can have done in the past worse. I had no clue about the, um, I thought when we got a building permit and then that's that. And so I'm getting educated just along with the rest of the public and the rest of us of council right now on a lot of these subjects I've asked about. I just want true clarity on the subject so I have understanding. Um, but yeah.
Yeah, my clarity is that we made a mistake and it's being done. And we got to move on. It's going to cost us more money.
Since my name was called out.
Simple.
Um, this is, uh, Reed. I'll speak. Um, I asked for the splash pad, uh, when we sat with Robert Williams and gave us the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward it. Um, there was a discussion about possibly putting two out. And, uh, we asked that we try to make one nice splash pad that would be really nice for the city of Darlington. Everybody agreed on that when we finalized that. Um, I had no idea about, of how a splash pad works. I'm not into the pool business or splash pad business or anything of that nature. Our first thought is that we, we asked that if we go to the lead, to the Hampton Street Park. Mrs., uh, Jones said that that was too small for the, the vision, for the setbacks and so forth, that we couldn't put it there. So then we came up with a spot to put it at the, uh, the Orange Street Park. If council could please listen, I appreciate it. So nobody's blaming anybody. We're just trying to figure out what's going on. If, if the contractor did what he was supposed to or not did what he was supposed to. If we had hired a, uh, con, an engineer, there was no telling what would it cost us to design that out, so that would have been additional money. If we, if we had spent and put it on two separate, uh, pads, then we still would have to then have additional parking for the, the concrete pads for handicaps or additional buildings that we built, uh, we'd have had two of those. Or either just have done it and where the water would, we should roll down the drain and we would constantly waste that water. So we decided to do it this way so we wouldn't, we could reclaim the water. So now we're not, um, I have been accused of numbers of times of doing things illegal.
That's what you're doing.
Council all voted on this. Uh, and if you can please be quiet and camp in their chambers or you're late. Okay, those are smart remarks. No one has done anything illegal. If it's been done illegal, it was done by all of council. Nobody on council has done anything illegal. And this gentleman has not done anything legal. The contractor, I don't think, did anything illegal. Somewhere along the line, nobody knew that we were supposed to contact DHEC at the beginning. We didn't try to hide anything, but they contacted DHEC at the end when we voted on doing the, doing the, uh, splash pad for the city of Darlington to put stuff in for our children and have things for our children. But yes, people would say, I was going to do it. We're trying to make the best we can for the city of Darlington so that it will look really good. Um, so we putting that out there and, uh, we're trying to get it done and, um, on any, any project, there are setbacks. All this other stuff, signage and electrical stuff, things that, just as the sugar set, what we're doing, getting ready to do a project all the time. We get to change out one water, one water meter, you don't know what you're approaching. So we didn't know what we were pushing and additional funds and things were coming up that we're meant to do. But, um, to clarify, nothing has been done illegal. Thank you.
And if council would have stayed out of it, if the city manager would have stayed out of it and turned the project over to codes, we wouldn't be in this mess. Okay? They should have let codes do her job. They should have turned the project over to her. But they did everything behind Sheila's back because she didn't even know what was going on. And that's why we're in this mess.
What did we do behind her back?
So, let's move on.
What, no, we're not moving on the back. We're not going to keep, so you, I'm going behind someone's back. We turned everything over, camp, over the code.
So it was, it was, the code's athlete was done.
Can I, um, I just want to make one comment. Let's try our best to not have personal attacks. Um, and the last thing I'll say is, as soon as we voted the funds through, before we move one piece of dirt, I was in the code enforcement's office and we had a discussion about her interest in making sure when we're doing projects in the future, that we all work together. And that is what me and her have always had a great working relationship on working on that kind of stuff. I hope we move forward. This is a valuable lesson on why we need to do a better job as an administration as a whole and working together.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
No, ma'am. Fifty-eight thousand dollar lesson.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
You need a hundred and twenty dollars to change?
Yes, sir. One hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents. I'm not sure exactly where that's coming from.
Can we, can we grant personal funds and meet with you next month? Would that be sufficient?
Um, if you can, at the very least, approve for, um, plumbing and the repairs. The fifty-eight thousand, well, I don't have my glasses on. Fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for the, um, replacing of the drain lines and eleven thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars for the plumbing.
If you don't mind, would, is, why do we need to do it this month?
To go ahead and get it started. So that we don't, because, um, construction prices change all the time. And so if we wait too long and the construction prices go up, then I might have to come in front of council and ask for even more.
I would just, if council wouldn't mind, I would prefer to wait a month and see if we could talk to some of our legislative bodies and see if they might have helped us out with this. Um, we have a couple of different options we can call around on. To my interest would be to wait. But I got voted down last month when I asked to wait for some grants. I understand if I'm a no vote on something. But I would just love, if we can, just to maybe have thirty days to come back and give you all the money you need.
Is there, is there-
Well, I mean, if, if we, I mean, if we're going to go that route, we can still approve the funds. And where, you know, if, and in the time that, um, repairs are being made, you can make contact with, um, your organization.
But then if we're spending the money, then-
I mean, you're going to spend the money anyway, so whether, if you can, you know, in-
They don't even give us a check and say, we're going to pay you back for a project you did last week. That's unfortunately how that works. So we have to have the project, the check go to them.
Do we have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to do this?
Have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Not like that. No, we don't.
How much do we have?
It's squeezing, sir.
How much do we have currently?
Currently, in the, uh, we do have some ARP funds to, uh, and already said he's going to need all of those funds. We got four hundred, sixteen thousand dollars left in there. And he said he's going to need that for projects.
Fila? The filo?
That's in the regular jump fund.
How much do we have in that?
Well, our jump fund right now, we have, um, a little over, a little over three thousand. But we, this is our critical time, but we got a lot of bills coming up, uh, insurance and everything. And then we have to draw it out. Hold those, uh, taxes for a hundred thousand.
If we approved money, it would be our obligation, the city to spend the money. But at this point in time, we don't know if we got the money.
Or where we want to spend it. I highly suggest give us a month to figure out where we're going to do it, how we're going to do it. Maybe we can find a state or the feds to help us out. It was very helpful here lately.
I think we don't have to carry this one forward until we've actually, I would promise to face somebody and we can pay.
No, I agree. Thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
Oh, it seems like everybody's leaving for a rusher. We've been at it for two and a half minutes, two and a half hours. Jump house, we take a pause and rehearse that. Give me a break, seconds. Counsel, you want to keep rolling? All right. Where we at now?
All right, discussion of possible rate increase, uh, presentation fees.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, audience.
Counselor.
Um, so, the possible rate increase and all presentation fees. Now, Mr. Mayor, I know, um, you discussed with me about your willingness to have it. However, at this current point in time, um, I'm requesting that this get moved to an actual work session. Um-
Does, to clarify, that's what I asked for, officer.
Yes, um-
As you can, uh, just for information.
Um, so, um, I'm requesting for the rate increase and all be discussed at the next work session. Which I believe, Councilwoman Raven, you know, twenty seconds, switch your old pose here momentarily. Um, so, just, that'll be it with council. You have twenty seconds. We discuss that in depth.
Is there discussions behind the doors or whatever else you have, or is it?
Sir?
No.
All right, so roll cards. Um, so, um, coming from the council, that's the quote that I gave you earlier. Um, so there's only one quote because I'm sort of high loaded, all over, you know, all over the country pretty much trying to contact, you know, manufacturers of roll cards. Well, Tote, well, with Tote, um, it's the only manufacturer around. And there's only one supplier that has contracts all throughout the state, as a district, that's Amy, our accountant. Uh, so that's where that quote came from. And with it being over five thousand dollars, of course, I have to come out, um, request. Uh, now this is a, a yearly expense. We have to buy new roll cards every year. Uh, directors prior to me coming in, they came to you and requested, you know, roll cards.
And these are roll cards that we print, the same ones we purchased before that aren't supposed to break as bad?
Uh, yes, well, now what we're doing right now is all the old ones that are still out there in use now. Uh, they're constantly, you get caught in and can replace. Uh, and we're getting new residents coming in, so and so forth. Uh, I thought, you know, it was my mistake for being on the assumption that the cards were already, um, purchased prior to me coming in. Because when I came in the door in April, we had less than four. Uh, now we're down to ten. And of course, here, what we're getting, have to be approved by council, is taking this long to get some new ones replaced. I'm asking to do, force funds being released out of my budget, you know, which is a lot of, um, for the nineteen thousand, seven hundred. Seventy-two dollars and eleven cents for additional roll cards. Uh, now, for us, we may not purchase that bill today. No, which is for two hundred and seventy-five.
One line is coming out of, it will be coming out, oh. Pull it back up. Apologize, I just had it pulled up. Got a new one, half.
So it'll be coming out of six forty's department, uh-
Six forty?
Yes, it'll be coming from, uh, two ninety-three.
Thanks, sir.
Capital waste of roll cards. Right on this plate.
And those funds were budgeted? There's enough budgeted for this?
Yes, ma'am.
I know we need it because I need one myself now.
We're having to, you know-
Compassionate, relax.
Compassionate together. And I know you, quite a few of the home, the citizens that are here tonight and you, the ones that are watching, you all over social media and everything, you're like contesting the same thing. I guess they have been called for getting a date. You know, with, you know, citizens, you know, so mad.
So, counsel, don't steal my old one. I like it unless you're-
Question for you, the nineteen seven seventy-two eleven-
Yes.
Is provided by Amy as an estimate. Is provided by Amy as an estimate, that says that the total shouldn't run above fifteen percent more than that, which would be twenty-two thousand and some odd dollars. Uh, have you got that kinda money in your budget?
Yes, so that line, you have this line item for capital waste, you know, commercial waste, as well as roll cards, you know, well over three hundred thousand, that line item.
At a good price compared with the last time we bought some?
Uh, the last time we bought some, uh, it was a lot, you said it was a lot more, because we bought way more all roll cards. Uh, this right here is for a half.
You're per each?
Oh, the per each, uh, is Saint Harps. Yes.
Six to two.
Yeah, roughly, roughly around sixty-two.
Legitimately, budgeting for, um, unless it's approved, uh, for titles. Unless it's approved, purchase of roll cards, according to nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eleven cents.
And I said.
May I, um, I'll vote for it, but again, wanna point out, it could end up costing him twenty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars if, if it's, uh, an increase based upon the bottom of the sheet.
Yes, now, I can only guarantee it won't, cause next year, when we come up for a work session, you know, I've got another option to decrease, you know, the number of cars that will actually be purchased.
Craig? Just back this, you can figure that, Mr. Curry?
And moving on to the upend on sale of our rolling stock, our inoperable vehicles and equipment. Uh, so I have three accounts to, uh, the two different, uh, government auction websites. Uh, they were supposed to came in last week, however, due to the storms and everything, they brought them all located upstairs, I mean, upstate. They had to readjust, so it'll be later on this month, hopefully.
So how many vehicles do you have or how many pieces of equipment do you have?
At this current point in time, we're looking at, you know, roughly eight, uh, vehicles.
Oh, good, so you'll be.
We're bringing, we're bringing some funds back into, uh, back into the city.
Okay.
Um, cause I, we believe, you know, what we're gonna do is actually roll that over into the jump one.
Oh, good.
Uh, cause, you know, some of those vehicles have been assigned to the direct department back in the day, the certification board, or certification back in the day. Um, so it'll be all, you know, city vehicles, they're just sitting there.
Oh, good.
Cause I've got a question, yeah, somewhat related to inoperable vehicles. Um, cherry pickers, I noticed that it's been several weeks.
Yes.
In my neighborhood and I look down at the streets and I see dead leaves on limbs and now we're getting more as people are cleaning up from the storm. What's the status on?
So at this current point in time, we still only have one running. Uh, and it's running six days a week. And the other one is kind of sitting there, half a tow at double A builders. Um, they're supposed to have a national with me by tomorrow on exactly what's wrong with it. And that's the one that we've taken from Lexington, we have twice. And only gotten, you know, a couple of houses of use out of it before it shut down again. My next step is actually do a personnel change and move my personnel around, make sure it's not operator errors.
Only thing I'll fall off, I'll throw or attack one of my fellow council members. But, um, I share, like, portion of yard with one of them. He likes to put out a little more yard debris than I do. He gets to sit at home though, he's retired, he gets to work in that yard. Um, that being said, there's some people who are a little more, um, clean with their yards than others. Put a lot more debris out there, just politely saying.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes people clear out a lot more spring cleaning kinda stuff versus, you know, just regular yard debris. So, one of the things maybe we wanna do, I know previously in my tenure on council, uh, sometimes we're gonna come up on yards and have a ton of debris and maybe we just don't pick it all up at one time, so we don't fill up the back of that truck, so we can make it through the whole neighborhood. You understand?
Yes, you wanna talk about a whole nother camera, bumping it up?
Then tell them to call council. Then tell them to call us. Or tell them to call me.
They will limited crying.
Do you have, do you have my cell phone number?
Sir?
Do you have my cell phone number?
I do, do.
Pass it on.
And as a matter of fact.
Make that truck move out.
Yeah, I think if you go look through the ordinance, there's actually, um, orders about how many yards that you actually can't pick up per yard. So everything I'm asking is what we should be doing.
Yes, uh, yeah, at this current time, you know, since we have been so far behind, I've been, you know, leaning on following that ordinance here, because people have been constantly having to follow up and, you know, they're, they're been delayed. Uh, it's been a mechanic with a blade, so they shouldn't, the citizens shouldn't be at fault for putting so much out.
Oh, I get that. And I'm not talking about, cause we're late for three weeks or a month or whatever. I'm talking about some people just put out a ton more debris than others.
Oh, yeah, yeah, trouble.
So, this is make sure.
Fact, I actually, you know, I have went out and got folks on new equipment, as well as leases. Um, in fact, we do have, uh, representative from one of the vendors, um, with us here tonight. Um, for, if there is any questions or anything, maybe further discussion later on. Cause I mean, it's kinda late and I don't wanna drag this off too late at night. But, you know, we'll stick around and answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Do you have a question, Missy? Okay, because you were talking about, sort of in that vein of equipment that's not working. Um, a few months ago, you came to us and you were talking about the hot box and having someone, a representative come and train you all on doing that, or has that happened?
Yep, um, that, we, uh, we did that whenever, uh, we did the rubber tractor. Um, however, every time we go to use the hot box, um, either the dump truck, you just use to pull it when it broke down or being utilized, uh, for, you know, weather. Um, so it's, it's all been timing and planning issues.
So with that said, have you also been able to use that back truck for storm drains, clean up storm drains since you have this flood?
Um, no, so the storm drains, that, uh, that falls under water. Um, so we haven't used.
On the streets?
Yes, we have, we have used, uh, this, uh, back truck goes on my, my side. Yeah, that falls under storm drain and stormwater falls under water.
They were out the other day. They were cleaning drinks out of the.
And my last question for you, we were talking, uh, you know, in that line of equipment. Um, it's two-fold, then how old are your cherry pickers, especially the one that's been, that continues to stay in the shop? And, um, you also mentioned about potentially purchasing some equipment that the school district had, that they were gonna be upgrading.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so that, that equipment, you know, they haven't gotten the new equipment in yet. So I believe you, once across a year, they do an auction. Um, so I'm still waiting to hear back on the V C I P.
Okay.
About that equipment and then our current cherry pickers and everything, they're roughly seven years old. So they're well past their, their lifespan.
Okay.
Um, you know, we've been good to get seven years use out of them. Uh, most of them, this probably is an old, five years maximum, just because of the content, you know, heavy use.
One's a two thousand fifteen, correct?
Sir?
One's a two thousand fifteen?
Yes, so nine years, and the other one from two thousand seventeen.
So maybe when we sell some of these vehicles, we'll be able to have some funds, maybe for you to replace some of these. It's, it's bad, even down Main Street, there's like all these tree limbs, it's sort of, it, it's almost dangerous to have them sitting out by the road like that when people are traveling. I'd like to just be able to pick that up on a consistent basis for our citizens, since they are paying the fee to have it.
Yes, ma'am. And I just got to a point, uh, got to a point, my guys, you know, they go out there with trailers on the back of the trucks and doing the old school way with pick works and sanding on the back of the trailer. Um, to try and get some of the dust out of the way.
Just so everybody understands, we charge the thirty-seven dollars and ten cent for a trash can to be picked up, correct?
Yes, uh, that's one thing.
Commercial, uh, tons of waste charges forty dollars. Right, it's moment with three dollars, two dollars and ninety cents cheaper than they are, they don't pick up yard debris.
That's correct.
Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
So, we're doing on the roll cards, correct?
Alright, uh, street banners designed, some of those?
Hey, everyone. About a month ago, um, y'all approved the transportation board to, uh, look into purchasing some banners. I have given you the artist renditions of what they come up with. What's really neat is on that, uh, that city one, uh, that's our actual skyline. That is the chamber and buildings beside the chamber. So that's really cool. Um, I don't think I'm really looking for a decision, I, I think you just wanted to see it before we did it, so.
Pearl of the P D.
Thank you, sir. It's beautiful.
Do we need to buy them?
Thank you.
We need to buy them in or some of them?
I don't think so.
We voted to buy, we voted to purchase them last year.
Yeah, you just wanted to see it.
So we, it was just you bringing it to us to make certain we were okay with the plan, I think.
Yep. Awesome?
Thank you.
Easy.
Alright, uh, confirmation of our proposed work session dates.
Those dates are listed, uh, October twenty, proposed dates, October twenty-second, November nineteenth, and December tenth. Just trying to do it the week before holidays and if there's, those dates, don't agree with anyone, that's, five of them it does.
You wanna have a conflict with any of those dates?
I would never conflict. It's a priority.
Sure, forget a little question, somebody had something come up on the mic to work with, but I think good on I am.
I'm assuming these would be six P M workshop?
Whatever time you like, I don't give a time, whatever time it is. I was trying to get the dates, lock in dates.
Anyone?
Yeah, I got my first right there. It's one of the first, it's one of the early.
I don't know if I can do that from set. What about the twenty-ninth?
Ask her if we can.
Halloween, right?
That's Tuesday's day.
So, what's the, why, why are we, why are we not meeting the first Tuesday in November here today?
What is the? Angela.
Hi. I know, but I had, did you have it over here for something? You had to remind me on the twelfth.
What's the twenty-ninth?
Number fifteen is the one.
Yeah, so that's what we had to do, council me, that's what council me is do. And I didn't wanna do it too close to Thanksgiving. The night, I, I chose, I was asking for the nineteenth, because that's the week before Thanksgiving, we didn't wanna do it the week of Thanksgiving.
You see, you were saying there's some kinda conflict?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm good with these dates, I won't know if anybody else had anything.
I'm fine too.
Really?
It was good?
So I'll make a motion then that we would, so then I'll make a motion that we, um, have work sessions on October twenty-second, November nineteenth, December tenth of twenty twenty-four with the time for those sessions to be.
Six.
We live at six o'clock, at six P M.
Five.
Five, it will be five?
Oh, I forgot.
Oh, you ought to be.
I mean, I just hate the late.
Do you do five or do you?
I like early.
Five or six?
I like five.
He said six works better for him, he can make it happen.
You wanna do early, you wanna do five thirty?
Yes.
How about five thirty?
Okay.
I'll work with that.
Five, at, uh, October twenty-second, November nineteenth, December tenth, for work sessions, uh, beginning at five thirty P M.
Thank you. Geez.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Second today.
Oh, I did hear.
Got two seconds.
Mr. Murray? Just back this one. Mr. Gardner? Say you're good, hi, Mr. Curry, thank you. Alright, do I have a motion to go into negative session in accordance of SubConico thirty dash four dash seventy-eight, which would allow, which allows for us closed meeting or discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, promotion, disciplinary release of an employee or the appointment of a person to involve the body, also a fee, discussion of negotiations, indecently proposed contractual agreement and opposed sale or purchase of property, um, to receive a legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending threatening or potential claim on other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims or the position of a public agency and all the adversity situations involving the person against the agency of the claim. Counsel, may or may not vote out.
I did not wanna enter, I did not wanna get away in such a long paragraph. So I would like to make a motion, but right before I make that motion, I just wanna say in council comments, um, I'm hoping we as council can do a better job of, um, staying on agenda for the business topics at hand. Um, we have long council meetings, I think it will help us be more proficient in doing our job and doing the business of the city, that we stay a little more on topic.
Thank you.
And I make that motion?
For a second? Sir? Read, hi, Mr. Curry, thank you. So may I vote out first? You got one, five minute break? Three minute break?